Good evening, good evening. It is 5:05 and we have eight members of council at the dais, so I will call this evening's zoning meeting to order. We will start by introducing ourselves those at the dais and we'll start to my left, we'll start to our right with our city clerk.
Ariel Smith, lead city clerk.
Good evening everyone, James Mitchell at large.
Good evening everyone, Renee Johnson proudly representing District Four.
Good evening, Luanne Mayfield serving you at large.
Liz Vaxton, Assistant City Manager.
Braxton Winston serving as Mayor Pro Tem.
Ed Driggs, District Seven.
Dark Bakari, District Six.
Good evening, Dante Anderson, District One.
Senior Assistant City Attorney, Terri Higler Gray.
So we will begin our meeting with an invocation. Our invocation is an expression, an inspiration followed then by our pledge of allegiance. The invocation by the council member is intended to solemnize our proceedings. We celebrate the religious diversity of our community, including those without religious faith. Tonight, council member Anderson will give our invocation.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. In, in light of Mother's Day being yesterday and as we celebrated all of our mothers and maternal figures in our lives, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to all the mothers who serve on council, to all the mothers in our fair city, and hope that you all had a wonderful special weekend. I also am going to recite, recite a poem by Washington Irving, and it's about mothers. Let me see here, pull it up. "A mother is the truest friend we have. When trials heavy and sudden fall upon us, when adversity takes the place of prosperity, when friends desert us, when trouble thickens around us, still will she cling to us and endeavor by her kind precepts and counsel to dissipate the clouds of darkness and cause peace to return to our hearts." Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you very much Ms. Anderson. Now we rise to pledge if you are able to.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I will give a brief, brief explanation of our zoning process. The process begins with applications that are submitted, submitted to our planning staff for review. There are two types of cases that we will deal with tonight. There will be decisions that will be voted on by the council and there will be hearings, public hearings where we will be able to hear from the community. Decisions on cases for, are cases for which a public hearing was previously, previously held, so there will be no further public comment unless the council has specific questions for the petitioner or staff. During our hearings, anyone who is wishing to speak is asked to see the clerk before the start of the hearing. So if you're here for a particular item and you have not signed up yet, please sign up with, come down and see our clerk and sign up before that hearing is opened. Staff will have a presentation where they do not have a time limit, then the petitioner will have their chance, and those that are in favor of the petition have a chance to give their presentation. They will get three minutes combined to present their, their case unless there are opponents signed up to speak or if staff is in opposition. If any of those two are the case, the petitioner gets 10 minutes to present, the opponent gets 10 minutes combined, and the petitioner gets a two-minute rebuttal. I do know that we have some items where several people are signed up to, to speak. Again, you get 10 minutes combined, so if I could ask you guys to coordinate between yourselves to most effectively and efficiently divide those 10 minutes. And then after, the petitioner will get a two-minute rebuttal. If no one is opposed or signed up to speak, staff provides a short presentation, the public hearing is closed, and then the next public hearing is open. After the public hearing, the petition goes to the zoning committee of the planning commission for review and recommendation. So at this time, I would like to pass the mic over to Phil Guzman, who is the Chair of the zoning committee, so he may introduce his board.
Excellent, thank you Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. I'm Philip Guzman, Chairman of the Zoning Committee and of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Planning Commission. Allow me to introduce my fellow commissioners, both present and not. Douglas Welton, Terry Lansdale, Ronnie Harvey, Melissa Gaston, Courtney Rhodes, and Will Russell. The zoning committee will meet next, pardon me, will meet Wednesday, May 31st at 5:30 PM here at the Government Center in Conference Room 280. At that meeting, we, the zoning committee will discuss and make recommendations on the petitions that are heard tonight. The public is welcome at that meeting, but please, please note, it is not a continuation of the public hearing that is being held here tonight. Prior to that meeting, you're welcome to contact us and provide input. You can reach all of our contact information on this city's, and information on each petition on the city's website at charlotteplanning.org. Thank you Mayor, pardon me, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to our first action of the night where we will consider our deferrals and withdrawals. We will consider all of the deferrals and withdrawals in one motion. So since our agenda was published last week, there have been a few changes that have been made to that agenda. I am going to ask our staff member, Mr. Petten, to go over the petitions that have either been submitted for deferral or withdrawal. After he goes over those changes, we will make a motion to accept the deferrals and withdrawals. Mr. Petten?
All right, thank you. We've got quite a few deferrals of decisions this evening. Start with the first, beginning with item number 18, 2021-2 LLC. Item number 19, 2021-213 by Goldberg Companies, Inc. Item number 20, 2022-048 by Tribute Companies, Inc. Item 21, 2022-060 Providence Capital Group. Item 22, 2022-099 by Levine Properties. Item 23, 2022-109 by Urban Trends Real Estate, Inc. Item 24, 2022-134 by Steel Trojan Properties LLC. 25 is petition 2022-147 by South Park Towers. 26 is petition 2022-160 by Pendler Development LLC. Item 27 is 2022-198 by Nest Home Communities LLC. And then item 30 is 2022-084 by Mission Properties. All of those are requesting a deferral to June 20th of 2023, and those are our decision items. And we do have several hearings that are requesting either a withdrawal or a deferral. First of those is item 39 by Four Store LLC, that's 2022-182 requesting a withdrawal, excuse me, item 40, 2022-195 by South Oak Partners LLC requesting a withdrawal of that petition. And then deferrals of hearings begin with item number 41, 2022-119 by Blackburn Communities. Item 42, 2022-191 with Red Cedar Capital Partners. And then items number 44, 2022-066 by Wood Partners. All of the deferral requests are to June 20th with the exception of item 44 by Wood Partners, which is requesting a deferral to July 17th of 2023. That is our list of deferrals and withdrawals. Thank you.
To defer all stated decisions and hearings.
Mayor Pro Tem, I need for Mr. Petten to repeat after number 39 because I did not hear any of those additional referral petitions as he went through them.
So we have a motion, Ms. Bakari, that's been seconded by Mr. Driggs. And Mr. Petten, can you please respond to Ms. Mayfield's question?
Sure, item 40 is 2022-0, or excuse me, 195 by South Oak Partners, that's a withdrawal. Item 41 is 2022-119 by Blackburn Communities LLC, deferral of the hearing. Item 42, 2022-191 by Red Cedar Capital Partners, deferral of the hearing. And let's see, item 44, 2022-066 by Wood Partners, also a deferral, that one being the exception to July 17th. Everything else is deferring to our June 20th meeting.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will move on to our consent agenda items. Rezoning petition items number three through 11, may, with the exception of items four...
Yeah, items four and 14 will be...
Four and 14.
Yep.
May be considered in one motion except for those pulled by a council member. Please note that all of these petitions meet the following criteria. They had no public opposition to the petition at their public hearing. The zoning committee recommends approval, and there were no changes after the zoning committee's recommendation. Staff also recommends all of these, all of these petitions for approval.
Move to approve all consent.
One second, are there any consent agenda items that council would like to pull for a question, comment, or a separate vote? We have number four and number 14 already.
13.
We'll pull number 13, Ms. Watlington, Ms. Johnson.
Could you repeat the numbers? I think you said three through 11, three through 17 I believe.
You are correct. I read, I read the script correctly, but the script was incorrect. You're right. So rezoning items number three through, through 17, with the exceptions right now of four, 13, and 14. Thank you Ms. Johnson.
Don't move.
No, Ms. Ms. Mayfield?
Six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 16.
Six, eight, nine, 10, 11.
16.
16. Right, so the consent agenda now is rezone, rezoning petition items, I'll just read the ones that are going to be on the consent agenda. Rezoning items number three, five, seven, 12, 15, and 17 may be considered in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bakari has made the motion, it's been properly seconded by Mr. Driggs. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposition, please raise your hand. That vote is unanimous.
Move to...
So we will move to item number, item number four. Hey, we have to do it one at a time?
We have to do it one at a time?
Correct, yes.
That's what she asked.
Give me a second please. So now we move on to the decisions. All right, agenda item number four is rezoning petition 2022-089 by Taylor Morrison located on approximately 43.72 acres on the south side of Mount Holly Huntersville Road and on the north side of Interstate 485 west of Oakdale Road in ETJ in council, County Commission, District One, Ms. Powell's district, and closest to City Council District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family residential in a Lake Wiley protected area, and the proposed zoning is MX2 mixed-use innovative in a lake, with the Lake Wiley protected area. The zoning committee voted 5-2 to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to...
We did have some changes after on that one.
Oh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
No problem.
Got one part. So there are items, some items with changes after the zoning committee recommendation. For those, the following items, excuse me, so there have been changes after they have been heard by the zoning committee. Prior to the vote on each of these petitions, we must state that the changes after the zoning committee have occurred, and that council is required to send this petition back to the zoning committee for further review unless council by three-quarters vote of all members present determines that the nature of the modification is such that future review is not necessary. So Mr. Petten, would you like to tell us about those changes on...
Sure, yeah, this petition 2022-089 did make some changes after the zoning committee's recommendation. They did remove perpendicular parking from public streets. They also mentioned that parking along public roads would be parallel parking as shown in previous submissions. Public streets would be constructed to CLDSM, that's our Land Development Standards Manual, standards, including design of on-street parking and sidewalk. They also showed turn lane improvements on the site, which labeled and dimensioned the components of that turn lane, and also added a conditional note committing to those improvements in coordination with NC DOT about how the turn lane would be designed with storage length, and also labeled and dimensioned curb and gutter from the center line for each spot on the, the site plan. So just minor changes, nothing that staff feels warrants additional review by the zoning committee. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Move not to send back.
Second.
Mr. Driggs has made a motion that's been seconded by Ms. Johnson to not send this petition back to the zoning committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous to not send back. So now we will consider a...
Second.
Second. It's been a motion by Ms. Johnson, that's been properly seconded by Mr. Bakari. Any further discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please...
Mayor Pro Tem, just want to make sure it includes a consistency statement.
I didn't hear what she said.
At least include a consistency statement in the motion.
Do I have a motion that the change should, sorry?
Changes, reader.
I'll read the proper, I'll ask for the proper motion, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
Motion to adopt and approve and include the consistency statement, yes.
Motion that's been made and properly seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? We have two, four, six, seven, seven, four, Ms. Mayfield is in opposition. Thank you very much. I am going to finish with the, well, hold on a second because we had some changes, now the order is a little mess, a little different.
Yeah, so that would bring us, next item would be item six if we want to take them in order from what was pulled from consent.
Yes.
Yeah. That was item four, we just did, five was already on consent, so that would take us to item six, which was the first item pulled from consent.
So agenda item number six, rezoning petition 2022-116 by Tribute Companies Incorporated located on approximately 48.09 acres on the, on the south of North Tryon Street, east of Trevi Village Boulevard, and north of University City Boulevard in Council District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family residential. The proposed zoning is R8 MF multifamily residential conditional. The zoning committee voted 5 to 2 to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Do I, is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
So moved.
A motion that's been made by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Ms. Anderson.
Adopt and approve.
Adopt and approve, yes, that's how it was read. Any discussion on this? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. So for this item, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, and 16, it is for my consistent opposition of inconsistent. These items were, have been identified as being inconsistent, so therefore I will be a no.
Thank you very much. Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt and approve, please, please raise your hand.
Well, I'm not sure what we are voting on, so you can just, I'll vote on the next one.
All, anybody opposed? Any opposed? We have one opposition and all are present are...
Please record it as a yes anyway.
Excuse me?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much. That motion passes.
Question?
Yes, Ms.?
Given that she made the statement for all of them, is there a way that we could batch them up?
There is not anymore. We have to keep, we have to do it individually. So that was number six. We'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight, rezoning petition 2022-140 by the F.A. Bartlett Tree Expert Company located on approximately 7.07 acres at the southeast intersection of Zor Road and Thomas Road, south of Youngblood Road in the ETJ in County Commission District Six, Ms. Rodriguez McDowell's district, closest to City Council District Three, Ms. Watlington's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is O1 office conditional. The zoning committee voted seven to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition.
Would you adopt and approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as council's own, made by Mr. Bakari, seconded by Ms. Ashmira. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that petition, please raise your hand. Any opposition, please raise your hand. For record, Ms. Mayfield is in opposition. Thank you very much. We'll move on to petition number eight, number eight. We just did that. Petition number nine, rezoning petition 2022... Petition number nine, rezoning petition 2022-149 by Flywheel Group, Tony Kuhn, approximately five point nine-one acres, located on the north side of North Tryon Street and the east side of Otondo Avenue, west of West Craighead Road, in Council District One, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is I1 light industrial and I2 general industrial, and the proposed zoning is TOD transit-oriented development urban center, as well as TOD NC transit-oriented development neighborhood center. The zoning committee voted seven to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
Would you adopt and approve?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Bakari, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the petition, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. For the record, Ms. Mayfield is in opposition, that motion carries. We'll move on to item number 10, rezoning petition 2022-169 by Kennedy Properties LLC, located on approximately one point eight-nine acres on the east side of Lambeth Drive, north of North Tryon Street, and west of West Eastway Drive, in Council District One, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is B2 CD general business conditional, and the proposed zoning is TOD NC transit-oriented development neighborhood center. The zoning committee voted four to two to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Anderson that's been properly seconded by Mr. Bakari. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this petition, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Ms. Mayfield is opposition. For the record, that motion passes. We'll move on to item number 11, rezoning petition 2022-166 by Boulevard Real Estate Advisors LLC, located on approximately point two-three acres on the south side of West Peterson Drive, west of South Tryon Street, and east of I-77, in Council District Three, Ms. Watlington's district. The current zoning is R5 single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is TOD NC transit-oriented development neighborhood center. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve this petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears on our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Watlington, and properly seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. For the record, Ms. Mayfield is opposed to that petition, that passes. We will move on to item number 13, rezoning petition 2022-171 by Providence Group Capital, located on approximately one point two-six acres on the southeast... On, excuse me, located on the east side of South Tryon Street, north of Remount Road, and south of Donovan Street, in Council District Three, Ms. Watlington's district. The current zoning is TOD NC transit-oriented development neighborhood center, and the proposed zoning is TOD UC transit-oriented development urban center. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Do I have a motion to approve this petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears on our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made by Ms. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Bakari. Ms. Watlington, you're recognized for discussion.
Thank you. I had a question to staff about if approved, the site would change the adopted place type to regional activity center. I see here that there's, along Distribution Street, there's still TOD NC there, so I'm wanting to understand what exactly that means.
So this parcel only will change to that regional activity center, or the rest will stay neighborhood center? It'll stay TOD NC unless somebody comes in for rezoning, which we'll evaluate at that point? So it just affects this parcel and this parcel only?
And so practically speaking, what does that mean in terms of allowable uses on this parcel?
Allowable uses are primarily the same, just building height and intensity is a little bit different from the UC district to the neighborhood center district. I think the height difference is fairly significant, it's about 100 feet or so, but we've seen a lot of those TOD NC districts transition. This is one of the last, there's probably about three or four left because of the addition of that new station that will be, I believe it, is it Rampart? I think that's the new station that's being proposed there by the Publix, because that's been adopted and is in process. We've seen a lot of the NC districts that were there transition to UC, because they have a closer proximity now to a station. So it's just part of that trend that we've seen with that new station coming online.
Okay, but it just applies to this one parcel, not the rest?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the petition, please raise your hand. Any opposition? Ms. Mayfield is in opposition, and that motion passes. We will move on to item number 14, agenda item number 14, rezoning petition.
We have pulled 14, we dropped the six.
No, it jumped. Did I... I didn't do 14 yet, no.
No, we didn't do 14 yet. No, that was pulled by staff for changes after.
Oh, yes, and I need to read that as well. So, Mr. Patton, this item does have changes after the zoning hearing, so, Mr. Patton, can you please tell us about those changes?
Yes, so the petition, there's a few changes that are bulleted out. Primarily, they were changing notes to address some of the optional provisions. This is a site that's got a little bit of some constraints with the retaining wall, and we were trying to work through some options for tree save and options for where things would be as far as like transformers and other elements of the project. So as we got further along, it became clear that we needed to remove some of those real specific items and just say that they would meet the tree ordinance, or they would provide, you know, potential location of a transformer, so they have a little bit more flexibility in permitting to move some of those things around rather than make them really locked in from this petition. We don't have any real concerns about those. They did add an optional provision also to reduce the parking from 15 to 14 spaces, so they have a little bit more room to work through some of the tree save requirements and other elements of the project. No real concerns from us. I understand the petitioner also reached out to the Belmont community about the changes, didn't receive any feedback or concerns from that group as well, so staff doesn't believe they need to go back for any review. It doesn't really change the outcome of the project, just gets us in a better position for when it goes into permitting for staff to work with the developer to get this project completed.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to not send back?
So moved.
Second.
Motion that's been made by Mr. Bakari and seconded by Ms. Anderson to not send back to the zoning committee. Is there any discussion about that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. If there's opposition, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, to not send back. So now we will consider rezoning petition 2022-174 by Anderson Pearson, located on approximately point three-four acres at the southwest intersection of Siegel Avenue and Belmont Avenue, north of Harrell Street, in District, City Council District One, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is B1 neighborhood business, and the proposed zoning is MUD-O mixed-use development optional with three-year vested rights. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff also recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve this petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion that's been made by Ms. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Bakari. Any discussion about this motion, about this petition? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Hearing none, that is unanimous. We will move on to item number 16, rezoning petition 2022-194 by RC Ventures LLC, located on approximately point one-five-two acres at the northeast intersection of Beatty Ford Road and Gilbert Street, west of Newland Road, and south of Interstate 85, in Council District Two, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is B1 neighborhood business, and the proposed zoning is TOD NC transit-oriented development neighborhood center. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve this petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
Would you adopt and approve?
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made by Mr. Bakari and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Ms. Mayfield, for the record, is in opposition, that motion passes. Thank you very much. We will move on to the rest of our decisions that were not on the consent agenda item. That is, that will start with item number 28, rezoning petition 2022-037 by Suncap Property Group LLC, on approximately point two-eight acres at the northeast intersection of East Boulevard and Scott Avenue, west of Kennelworth Avenue, in Council District One, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is NSPED Neighborhood Services with a pedestrian overlay, and the proposed zoning is B1 PED Neighborhood Business with a pedestrian overlay. The zoning committee voted six to one to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made by Ms. Anderson and properly seconded by Mr. Driggs. Any discussion of this petition? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Hearing none, that is unanimous. We will move on to item number 29, petition number 2022-087 by Appaloosa Real Estate Partners, on approximately 11.65 acres on the east side of Mallard Creek Road, north of Governor Hunt Road, and west of David Taylor Drive, in Council District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is UR2 CD urban residential conditional. The zoning committee voted six to one to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Johnson that is seconded by Mr. Driggs. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I want to lift up the residents of Culver Park in District Four, who worked so hard with the developer to reduce this petition. Initially, if you notice in your book, it was for 283 rental units, and now it's for 132 for-sale units. And also, there's a 20% rental cap. And the last issue that the residents had a concern with was the place of the bus stop. I did work with city staff and received some information back today, but that will be addressed during permitting. So for my colleagues, this is a way that the standard has been raised. When the residents speak out, you all have heard me talk about the concern about all of the multifamily in the Mallard Creek area, so I am, again, honored to represent the engaged citizen, and I look forward to supporting this petition.
Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Although this item is an item that is inconsistent, I will be supporting my colleague because of the work that she has been able to do with the community and the developer in creating more for-sale product for our community. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposition, please raise your hand. That is unanimous in favor. We'll move on to item number 31, rezoning petition 2022-091 by Tim Pratt Copper Builders LLC, on approximately 1.53 acres on the south side of Limwood Drive, west of Sterling Road, and north of Ridgewood Avenue, in Council District Six, Mr. Bakari's district. The current zoning is R17 multifamily residential, and the proposed zoning is UR2 urban residential conditional. The zoning committee voted five-two to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
Would you adopt and approve?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Bakari, it's been seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous in favor. We will move on to item number 32, rezoning petition 2022-133 by Paramount Developers LLC, on approximately 18.4 acres on the north and south side of North Lake Mall Drive, west of Interstate 77, and east of North Lake Center Parkway, in Council District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is CC Community Center, and the proposed zoning is MUD-O mixed-use development district optional. The zoning committee voted five-two to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and site and building design. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made, properly seconded by, made by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Mr. Driggs. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
I did want to clarify one thing before we start. So the transportation items were cleared up, this, we got it planned in after the agenda was printed, and your notebooks were printed, so the site plan issues with transportation have been resolved. It's still just the items with the perimeter fence and pedestrian gate that still would be an outstanding issue, but wouldn't affect the petition being able to be approved if that's the council's discretion. Thank you.
So staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design. We have a motion that's been made and properly seconded. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. This is a residential development in the parking lot of North Lake Mall. So, and they're, you know, upper-scale, if you will, units. I think this is a dose of what the North Lake area needs. I've said for a while, we need to be intentional about the revitalization and the protecting of North Lake Mall. You know, there's a lot of discussion about Eastland Mall we've been having for years. We want to do everything we can, and I've said this, all hands on deck. I worked with Senator Marcus in discussion, I talked to the mall staff, worked with the developer. So I, you know, we, a couple months ago, we approved a dealership for a Porsche dealership, and I think Maserati. So we're really being intentional about the development and the re-imagination, if you will, of North Lake Mall. So I look forward to supporting this petition. There were some concerns about connectivity. The developer has come back and will be building or designing sidewalks around the perimeter of the development. So I think this is a healthy balance of connectivity while allowing the developer to help us to revitalize this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll ask a couple questions of staff. Number one, just so we're clear, Mr. Patton, this isn't, these changes that were made, they came into conformity, it's not something that we have to vote not to send back to the zoning committee?
Yeah, these were presented out at, with zoning committee. The only change is, they added an additional perimeter sidewalk around, but that's, you know, something we had been asking for and was an outstanding issue that they're continuing to address, so not a significant change that we would have reconsideration of.
But I don't think it's every, every month that we still have outstanding issues. So can you speak to what those outstanding issues are?
Yeah, we typically like to have those resolved. I think this is just a situation where, you know, staff would like to see that perimeter fencing and gated area for the pedestrian access through the middle of the site removed. Understandable that the petitioner says they're unable to do that just for their own, you know, purposes for where they are located around the mall. They will have that pedestrian gate open between, I think, eight and six, so it would be open for the majority of the day, just after business hours. They would close that walkway that goes through the center of the site there on the left of the screen. You know, we'd like to see open all the time and removed, but, you know, certainly understand that they're, they have concerns about not having that measure in place, so we're just, you know, kind of at an impasse. So if it gets constructed with the fence, I think that's why we asked for the perimeter sidewalk around it as well, so if somebody comes up to that gate at seven o'clock, they can continue to make their way around the site. There weren't sidewalks originally when we reviewed this before, so that, I think that helps. But that's really our only issue, is we would like to see that removed, but understand the petitioner is in a different place with what their needs are.
Was the concern about the access to that road or sidewalks regarding, like, going from the mall to the shops on the other side?
I think that's from the petitioner's standpoint, from what I understand, they have concerns about having that open, you know, after hours, you know, evening, nighttime, just to allow, just for the folks that live in the community to have that access, but during the day, it would be open for anybody, to the public. So, you know, that's where they are with it, they need it shut down for hours in the evening and nighttime, but, you know, that's something, as part of an activity center, that's what we would like to see, that pedestrian access is always open and available, but a decent middle ground is to have that sidewalk around the perimeter, but, you know, we think we'd still have that ask, so. we'd still have that ask, so.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions or discussions? Here are none, all in favor of the petition, please raise your hand. Any opposed? I'll be opposed to that one. We'll move on to item number 33, Rezoning Petition 2022-164 by Carolina Holdings III LLC, located on approximately 10.18 acres along the north side of Hart Road, east of Susanna Drive, and west of Rosales Ferry Road in Council District 2, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is R3 Single Family Residential with the Lake Wiley Protected Area, and the proposed zoning is R6 Single Family Residential with a Lake Wiley Protected Area. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to?
Would you adopt or approve?
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made by Mr. Bukary and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Is there any discussion of that? Here are none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous in favor of item number 33. We'll move on to item number 34, Rezoning Petition 2022-163 by Carolina Holdings V LLC, located on approximately 0.55 acres on the north side of Hart Road and the east side of Susanna Drive, west of Rosales Ferry Road in Council District 2, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is R3 Single Family Residential, Lake Wiley Protected Area, and the proposed zoning is R6 Single Family Residential, Lake Wiley Protected Area. The zoning committee voted six to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas?
Would you adopt or approve?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Bukary, that's been seconded by Mr. Driggs. Any discussion of that motion?
Yeah, I just mentioned that Mr. Graham couldn't be here today. He's reached out to all of us about his items that they were, he supported them, and just wanted everyone to know that with this, and the other two, we approved.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous in favor of item number 34. We'll move on to agenda item number 35, Rezoning Petition 2023-058 by Charlotte Planning, Design, and Redevelopment. It's a text amendment. This text amendment proposes to make minor changes that will result in better functionality of the UDO prior to the effective date of June 1st, 2023. There are proposed changes in the most, in most articles of the adopted UDO. These changes include update language to provide greater clarity, new and updated graphics, language adjustments to provide better consistency with 160D, updated terminology and definitions, reference corrections, Scrivener's error corrections, adjustments to some use permissions and prescribed conditions, and minor changes to standards. The zoning committee voted seven to nothing for approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this commission, of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Driggs, that's been seconded by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion of this? Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. You mentioned earlier that staff had a update for us because council, all of council received an email regarding the UDO impact on future affordable, single-family detached and attached home construction, but there may be some confusion into what is written and how it's interpreted, part of that being around the ground concrete for rear yard patios, as well as clarifying the language on the two-to-four unit attached homes and driveways. So since these next two items, I'm not sure if it will be in this one or the next one that staff will be able to give some clarification on those.
Mr. Patton?
Yeah.
Ms. Craig?
Sorry. Yeah, we had a few items that came up, and I'm aware of them, but had a lot of other items there, so I'll let Ms. Craig come up.
And my apologies on not getting this to staff earlier. Unfortunately, I didn't have access to everything via online, since I do not receive the book until late midday today, so I didn't have it over the weekend to review it.
Sure, so both of the concerns that he raised were, I think, misunderstandings. So the first one was about the patio. He thought that because it was being removed from the table, that then it would be subject to the same architectural requirements, things like roof lines and things like that. Actually, by removing it, it makes it so that it's not subject to that, so I think it actually addresses the concern that he, that he raised for that particular one.
So for clarification for those who may be listening, right, the language around, if you have new-built construction, and right now, we have anywhere from that little five-by-five patio, or if you choose to purchase in a new construction, you can have an extended patio, are we saying that that's being eliminated, or that's not being, not being addressed in the UDO?
We're silent on it, that's, it's not subject to that same setback requirement, so you could build it just like a driveway to the property line. So it, I believe, addresses the concern that he had, that that would be, would increase cost by having the same type of setbacks, like a roof line for a patio. So we, that is not what we intended to do. So patios, patios are allowed to be built to the property line.
Thank you.
And then the second one was related to driveways.
Yes.
And so I think that's also a misunderstanding, too. Those requirements were not changed as part of this particular text amendment. Again, this is a cleanup text amendment, there are no policy changes that are being proposed as part of this. And so what I think the misunderstanding would be that the sublots would be held to those same driveway restrictions, and that's not true, it's just the master lot. And so I may need some help from staff if you need more technical information about that, but really, that section was just a clarification, and so we reorganized text. There is no change in what the driveway widths are proposed from when the UDO was adopted by council to what, to what is being proposed in the text amendment. It's really just reorganizing the text to make it more clear, but I think the question has come up as to whether or not those restrictions are for sublots of the lot, and that's not the case.
So in layman's terms, if someone was watching this and they do not have a development background, if they, if you're attempting to build a house, whether it's a duplex or a triplex, the lots for the driveway are 10 feet, so that's, I think, if I was understanding the question correctly, he thought that say it's a triplex, then it's three units attached. Each one would have their 10-foot-wide driveway, but there was a misunderstanding, thinking that the driveway would be shortened or that one of them would be eliminated?
So I may call on a technical staff member to help clarify this, but what, thanks Ellen, but what I want to, what I want to make sure you understand is that in this cleanup text amendment, there's no change to what we've proposed for the driveway width. So it really, that whole section is just a reorganization of text, but that is something that was important to clarify for the developers out there that are trying to understand what the difference is between the lot and the subplot and what you can do, but.
Okay, so before you pass it over, if it was just for clarification, you have now clarified what for developers?
So we have clarified in that particular section what is, which types of units have to have those certain restrictions, because it was in two different locations within the document, and we put it all in one place. So it looks like a lot of redlining, but it's really just a reorganization of the same text.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay, got it.
Ms. Mayfield?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wallington?
Thank you. I had a question about the amendments and development approvals portion, where it says clarifies that a recommendation by the planning commission is considered favorable if no recommendation is made within 30 days after a petition is referred. Can you explain exactly what that means? Because upon first reading, it may look as though that means that inaction is automatic approval, so I just want to understand exactly what that means.
And I guess, I think I misunderstood your question then from earlier. So that's in our current ordinance as well, so essentially, if a petition goes to zoning committee and it has 30 days where they haven't taken action on it, then it comes back to y'all for a decision with a favorable recommendation, essentially, inaction by zoning committee to make a recommendation, and that 30 days then results in an affirmative recommendation from them. And that's in our current, current ordinances also.
And what would cause that?
It could be in just an inability to vote on it. There are some caveats to it, so if it comes up and they, it gets deferred, you know, or there's a vote that doesn't get, you know, the full requisite four votes, whether to approve or deny, then that, that provision doesn't necessarily kick in. So there are some nuances to it, but if it goes to zoning committee and they just don't take any action on it at all, whether to defer or something else, then a petitioner could say, hey, look, I want to move forward, and then it would just go forward with that affirmative recommendation. But it doesn't happen often, it's something that's fairly common in most ordinances and jurisdictions that I've worked in in the past also. It just doesn't allow zoning committee or planning commission at some point in the process to just hold up a petition without taking, by not taking action on it. So it's very rare that it would ever happen, I don't think I've seen it in, you know, my career happen thus far, so, but it's just an ability for them, or inability for them to basically hold it hostage, if that makes sense.
I got you. And if it did come forward, then, given that it didn't have a vote, it would be, would it be indicated to council that it actually had not been?
Yes, yeah, if that ever came up and that 30-day provision was exercised and used, we would then communicate to y'all that the recommendation is coming from zoning committee in a favorable way through that inaction versus an actual vote, so that we would make sure that that was clarified to y'all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to piggyback off what Councilmember, excuse me, Mayfield was asking, sorry, was asking about the question that we received from the member of the public. He also indicated that these amendments have a cumulative impact on the ability to construct affordable homes. So I know that they're being presented as minor changes, but just the text amendment, this is just number 35, this is one of them. So that's not minor. So I wanted to know if that's something that we should allow more time or to hear from the public on these changes. There's, again, this is, this seems quite significant. And then, secondly, I want to understand the process of this UDO text amendment and UDO change is, are we, as council, allowed to, I mean, not allowed to, we're allowed, but what would be the process for us to look at the UDO language, specific provisions? Because what I'm hearing from the public, they're, they're starting to recognize the impact of the UDO on development, and starting to recognize that the elimination of the single-family exclusivity is problematic. So what would be the process for council to look at text amendments, and when is that, when is that initiated?
So I'll start with your first question. Yes, that is quite a lengthy amount of paper for the text amendment, and it's because it is a red line, so every single change, even if, like I was saying earlier, even if we moved the entire section and moved it somewhere else, it shows up as a red line. And so everything that's in that, this particular text amendment, is intended to make things easier to understand, easier to administer, and provide clarification that we've gotten over the last few months since the UDO was adopted. So it is all there intended to make it function better. There are, there are no policy changes that are a part of that. In fact, the two sort of policy-related things that have come up recently are the two other text amendments that are before you tonight for decision, because we wanted those to be separate, because they do have something broader than just a cleanup function. So while it is large, it is something that we talked about from the very beginning, that we would be coming before you for this, but it is clearly, and it is intended to be just administrative and functionality improvements. Related to other items, in terms of just of some of the affordable housing questions that were brought up, we've had a lot of those discussions about just what does the UDO do for affordability and for improving that, and a lot of those conversations occurred, and some of those even, the same things that were brought up, were brought up in terms of the, the impact, sorry, the economic impact analysis that we did, and we specifically had an affordable housing work group that worked through some of those, and we made some changes, and we reached a place in which I think we were comfortable. And then your last question about bringing forward future items, we are continuing to discuss amendments that come brought, you know, before us, and if there are things that we think are important, we will bring this to the UDO Advisory Committee. We certainly have committed to bringing text amendments that we are considering before council committee, and so we'll continue to do that over the next months and years.
So if there was a specific provision that the public wanted to see changes to and brought them to the council, their representative's attention, or to the city staff's attention, what would be the process to make a significant change to the UDO?
I mean, that would be something that council could advise staff to do. We have always said that this is a living document and wanting to improve that, but keep in mind, too, that the UDO is an implementation tool for the comprehensive plan, and so it is not intended to change policy. It is intended to implement the policy that the council has acted on, and the community has stated that they want to see as their vision for the community. So I would keep that in mind, that this is not intended to change direction, it isn't, the UDO is intended to implement what the vision of the community is and was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have six in favor, Ms. Malina, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Winston. Ms. Mayfield? Yeah, any opposed? We have two in opposition, Ms. Wallington and Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number 36, Rezoning Petition 2023-056 by Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development, a text amendment. This text amendment proposes to amend the Unified Development Ordinance for the use, the Use Landfill, Land Clearing and Inert Debris, LCID, by one, deleting it as a use permitted with prescribed conditions in all zoning districts except ML2; two, modifying the use in the ML2 zoning district as a use requiring a conditional zoning that complies with the prescribed conditions; three, increasing the distance between an operational portion of an LCID landfill to 50 feet away from any property line; four, adding a requirement that the actual fill area shall be located at least 300 feet from any neighborhood one or neighborhood two place type or an existing residential structure in any other place type; five, deleting collector's streets as a permitted primary vehicular access; six, adding limited hours and days of operation for the use; seven, adding a requirement for a geomembrane liner and a leachate collection system subject to state standards that is equal to or exceeds the state criteria for municipal solid waste landfill units; eight, adding a requirement that the use shall comply with the state groundwater well and surface water requirements for municipal solid waste landfill; and nine, deleting the requirement for a zoning permit for the use. The zoning committee voted seven to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a motion to approve this petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas as the council's own?
Approve and adopt.
Approve and adopt.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Mitchell that's been seconded by Ms. Mayfield. Is there any discussion of this? Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. This one, I just got to pause and make sure the citizens of Charlotte understand what this text amendment is about. This is about not allowing a landfill to be built beside your home. This goes back to December 2022. Councilwoman Mayfield and I joined a neighborhood group. Over 200 citizens who was fighting a landfill proposed to be built beside their community. Planning staff, thank you so much for listening. To council members, and more importantly, listen to the citizens who say this should not be allowed. I think this has been on our books since 1959. And so here we are today, thanks to Dan Campbell, who's here, and I have to recognize a lot of the other communities who worked with us to make sure we can get here today. Pleasant Oak Circle, Sutton Farms, Weston Woods, Stone Gate, Lonning Point, excuse me, Lonney Pond, and all the neighborhoods along Pleasant Grove and Oakdale Road. Thank you so much for, your voice was heard. Thank you for allowing council and staff to act, but more importantly, this is a big win for the neighborhoods in the city of Charlotte. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous in favor of passing the motion. We'll move on to agenda item number 37, Rezoning Petition 2023-057 by Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development, text amendment. This text amendment proposes to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow multifamily attached and multifamily stacked development in the CG and CR zoning districts under certain conditions, and to modify the prescribed conditions for the principal-use drive-through establishment and accessory-use accessory drive-through, formerly drive-through facility to limit their use in centers' place types. The zoning committee voted seven to nothing to recommend approval of this petition, and staff recommends approval of this petition. Is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee?
Sorry, we do have a change on this one, just as well, just a minor one to vote on.
Okay, so we have a change after the zoning committee, so Mr. Petten?
Sorry about that. So this petition, 2023-057, did have one minor change following the zoning committee's recommendations, really just a further point of clarification. We had design standards referenced that just said it would apply to the accessory drive-through rather than the building, which the drive-through is attached. So the design standards that would come as a result of this text amendment for a drive-through, or accessory drive-through, would have to follow those standards for the actual building itself. It was just, the way it read, it almost read like it was just applied to the drive-through window part of the building, so this just clarifies that. So not a major change. We do not believe it should go back to zoning committee again, just a further clarifying item.
Motion to not send back to the zoning committee.
Second.
Motion that's been made and properly seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to not send back to the zoning committee, please raise your hand. Any opposition? Hearing none. That is unanimous not to send back. Now, is there a motion to approve the petition and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agendas and on the screen as the council's own?
Second.
A motion that's been made by Mr. Driggs and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, did you want to be recognized?
No, I wanted to ask a question before we close the.
That means yes, you want to be recognized.
No, I don't, not for this petition.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing none. All in favor?
Let me just ask a question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bakari.
Can you just very quickly tell me exactly, because I know we've, we've already made changes to what's allowed from a accessory drive-through and drive-through establishment. Well, is this just a technical adjustment, or is this also like moving the goalpost further from people being able to actually have drive-through capabilities in parts of town?
What this is, so we, we noticed as we reviewed translation zoning and what districts will go to what, that we had a lot of B1 and B2, which would go to that CG and commercial district that were in our activity centers, which don't necessarily promote new accessory drive-through uses. And so rather than have that happen by right, when that translation occurs, this essentially takes it a little bit further and says that they would have to go through a conditional zoning to go through that process to be considered in that scenario, because the activity centers aren't intended for those auto-oriented uses, but the CG district really facilitates that outcome. So we tried to find a common ground between allowing those transitions in that district to convert to a CG, but recognize that they're in an activity center and provide some restrictions on drive-through uses, while also, on the flip side, allowing multifamily, which wasn't allowed in CG, in those activity centers, because you want residential where some of those activities are going to be occurring. So it's really just a kind of a stopgap measure until we can do alignment rezoning in the next couple of years that will better facilitate the outcomes of our activity centers regardless if they have this CG zoning, which is heavily auto-oriented.
Just double check me. Well, so let me say it back to you. Is, is, if you're in that district today, and then the June 1 translation occurs, and you had a drive-through, does this mean that you're not by right?
No, you could still.
Got grandfathered in?
Yeah. If you, drive-throughs that are existing would not be affected. They would still have to go through and meet design standards, but they could be replaced on that site. So it doesn't affect existing.
Who has to go through this permitting or semi rezoning process in that scenario?
New drive-through establishments.
Somebody comes in post-June 1 with a new drive-through.
And has nothing on the site. Either it's vacant, or it doesn't have any existing drive-through.
But they might have had site plans that allowed for it?
No. That, if site plans would be vested, so that was.
What's changed then? That's, I guess we're at.
So what, what changed is vacant, vacant properties or properties that don't existing, don't currently have an existing drive-through. After June 1, if they're in an activity center, but they have that commercial zoning, which would allow it in other, all other places, if they're in an activity center, there's an extra step and process to go through to have a drive-through considered there.
So if we are more advocates of having more flexibility for people to have drive-throughs in these areas, if the things allow for it, this would be a restriction on that, and you should vote against it?
This would be a, I would say this would provide us a better outcome of the goals of the activity centers. Would it allow some additional constraints on new drive-throughs in those activity centers? Yes, it would, because that's the purpose of those activity centers, is to have less auto-oriented uses.
Good catch. Thank you. I just don't fully understand everything yet, but I'll have to vote against this one, my friend. Thank you. I encourage my comments.
On your advice.
Yes, thank you for the advice.
Just, just my information. Advice not given. Thank you.
Any further comment or questions?
Oh, just, just.
Ms. Watlington?
Just to provide a little color on this, the areas that are existing activity centers, where are they? Just in general.
So I'll give a couple examples. So on 7th Street in Elizabeth and also in Cotswold, those are both designated as activity centers, neighborhood center, activity centers. They have a predominant zoning district of B1 and B2 right now, today. So on June 1, they'll go to CG, which is an auto-oriented place type or auto-oriented zoning district. The intent, again, of those activity centers is to move away from those and promote more pedestrian-oriented activities. So this, this text amendment would then take those CG districts and say, if they're in those activity centers, then they would go through that extra step for consideration of a drive-through use. If you have CG anywhere else in the city that's not in an activity center, this has no impact on that whatsoever. So CG that's in a commercial place type or another place type, no impact whatsoever. It's only those CG districts and CR districts that are in activity centers that are mapped on the policy map.
And those typically fall where?
Those typically fall in some of our major organ, like, I would say some of our major nodes and intersections, Park Road Shopping Center, South Park, Elizabeth, Cotswold, places around NODA, Commonwealth, Plaza Midwood. So those areas that are continually beginning to urbanize and, and move away from, or what we'd like to see them move away from, some of those auto-oriented uses and more pedestrian-oriented uses.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayfield? Oh, are you done? Ms. Mayfield.
So help me understand, David, because if I live on the other side of town, and I want to come visit these areas, as we continue to make these place types and we make these 10-minute neighborhoods, one, it's encouraging residents to just stay in their bubble. But if I'm coming from Freedom Drive and going over to Plaza Midwood or one of these areas, and if the goal is to try to reduce vehicle traffic, are we considering what a decade from now this language could potentially do to neighborhoods as far as not having connectivity when we look at east, south, west, and north, with people visiting their city versus just parts of their city, or just staying in their immediate neighborhood or community?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
So, because I'm thinking if I'm driving over, because there's not, I don't have public transportation, so where I'm coming from, there's not a bus, and there's not a route that's convenient outside of maybe two hours if I manage to maneuver through the cat system and catch the buses to get over to the area. I'm trying to understand how these place types and how this language plays out in real time for if I'm going to visit a friend or someone that lives in that area, and we want to go out to eat, if there's no drive, not just drive-throughs, the whole conversation of how we're trying to create these 10-minute neighborhoods, because what you just said just made me think about, okay, what does that look like if I want to go visit a friend that lives over there and say I want to pick up something quick? I won't have access to a drive-through if it's currently not one there, because a lot of development is happening throughout Plaza Midwood and in certain little pockets. So that means if it's a new building, then I, it might not, it won't be able to have a drive-through, so I wouldn't be able to pick up something if I'm on the way to come visit you or on the way leaving, visiting you. Like, are we thinking about the impact of trying to get people out of individual cars?
And so you could still go and drive to those activity centers. The point would be to potentially go to those activity centers, park once, and be able to walk around and get the things that you need out of those activity centers without taking multiple car trips within that activity center. So that's really what the goal of those are long-term. So can you still go and visit those places? Yes, and if they are still existing, they would be there. New ones will have some additional steps to go through as, to be part of some of those activity centers, but this is really, again, trying to make sure that we've got activity centers mapped out, but we recognize that there is a big disconnect between the zoning that's on the ground and the goal of the place type. And so this, again, is just a stopgap measure to try to get a better outcome for those activity centers. But you can still drive to an activity center, but the point would be to limit car trips within that activity center.
Thank you.
And if we could go back to, I believe it's the third or fourth slide on the deck. Thank you. That one there, thank you. No, I just wanted to go back to that, because it highlighted neighborhood centers and place type, and had some of the texts we just talked about, so just for reference.
Mr. Driggs?
So I think I understand that staff is just trying to implement the policy that we adopted, and to that extent, I support it. On the other hand, I was always opposed to, to the drive-through thing, because until we have alternatives to cars, all we're doing is punishing people that have to drive and don't have a choice. So I would like to see us move in tandem with the, the new bus routes and the other modes of mobility before we start squeezing the cars, and therefore I'm a no on this. Thank you.
I'm just going to say something. This does not disallow people from putting drive-throughs in places. This is not disallow restaurants from existing at all. I just want that to be clear. If you drive to across town to meet your friend, you guys can meet at their house and drive to the activity center and still go get something to eat, potentially through a drive-through still. This also allows for more housing to be built in more places, just to clarify.
Mr. Bakari.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. I, I think the simplest way to say it is this, there are two sides of kind of a chasm in, on this council on how we view cars and car-centric stuff. Some folks believe it is needed, and that's reality. Some folks are driving towards a world where, in certain parts of town, they want to de-incentivize that. I think regardless of what side you're on, I think we would all agree, we have yet to have a robust conversation from a policy perspective, not just how we're going to do that, but how we're going to invest in the infrastructure that makes that work. And we haven't done that yet. So to come out here, even if it's something minor, and staff, I know this is kind of minor, but it has this slight twinge to it of, of, well, now there's another step of bureaucracy that someone needs to go through if these criteria are met in this spot, which means they can't have that. I, I'm going to be a no, not because like that is such a, a big thing, but because we haven't gone and had this conversation, both how are we going to treat this around town, and more importantly, how are we going to invest in the infrastructure to support this kind of dream that people have in certain parts of town that there are no cars. So until we get serious about that, we, we have to just kind of send staff a message. Don't piecemeal us with stuff. Let's come together and come up with a strategy as a council, and then we'll, we'll do a sweeping thing.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. That text amendment fails.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get some clarification on item number 36.
That's, item is closed, so we're going to keep moving on to the next item. Agenda item number 38 is the adoption of a text amendment to the Charlotte tree ordinance to adopt the text amendment to Chapter 21 Charlotte tree ordinance of the city code, which has an effective date of June 1, 2023. This is not a zoning item, so this is just a little different. I'll make a motion to approve, adopt and approve item number 38.
Do you have to read the whole statement?
No, this is different.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been made and properly seconded, made by Mr. Winston and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Johnson.
If this is approved, could the policy be retroactive, pending application for something to do with this petition? And we approved it tonight. How would that affect a pending item?
If there's an application already in place, the, the ordinance in place at the time the application was received would, would apply.
So can council make an approval for, for something to be retroactive? No?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Ms. Johnson, for the record, opposed to the motion that passes. All right, well, that is our last decision. We'll move on to our hearings. Moments you've all been waiting for. We'll start with agenda item number 43, rezoning petition 2021-120 by Maria Mergeanos, located on approximately .45 acres on the east side of the plaza, north of Mimosa Avenue, and south of Mecklenburg Avenue in Council District 1, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is B1 neighborhood business and O2 office, and the proposed zoning is NS Neighborhood Services. The current, staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, environment, and site and building design. This petition does not have opposition, so after staff's presentation, Brooks Whiteside, you'll have three minutes.
All right, thank you, 2021-120. That's just short of a half acre on the plaza. It's a currently zoned O2 and B1, really split kind of right down the middle there. Proposed zoning is for Neighborhood Services. The adopted place type is Neighborhood 2 on the 2040 policy map. The proposal would allow all uses in the NS district in that existing 2,280 square-foot building, would limit building height to 40 feet, prohibits things like fuel sales, drive-through uses in arcades, does propose vehicular access via one of the current driveways, and would close the northern driveway, commits to a 10-foot multi-use path and 8-foot planning strip along the plaza, commits to re-marking current bike lane pavement markings to a dedicated right turn lane, a bike ramp near the south property line to help transition bicyclists from separated bike lanes to the multi-use path, and then extend that 10-foot multi-use path to the southern property line. Also commits to striping and dedicated right turn arrow per CDOT pavement marking standards, and would commit to dedicating 50 feet of right-of-way if it does currently not exist on the plaza. Staff does recommend approval of this petition upon resolution of issues related to transportation, environment, and site and building design. It is inconsistent with that Neighborhood 2 place type. NS does allow for some residential uses if they wanted to convert that, but our understanding is primarily the use would be an adaptive reuse of that existing building. And while inconsistent, staff doesn't have any significant concerns with the historic use of that building being non-residential to maintain that, that permitted use and some other options for uses in the long term. So with that, we'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brooks Whiteside, you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time to review this rezoning petition. Brooks Whiteside with Whiteside Properties, and I represent the owner of 2212 of the plaza. We are seeking to rezone this half-acre property because at some point in time, the property owner ended up with a parcel and building that has two different zoning designations. One half of the building has B1 zoning, and the other half has O2 zoning. We're rezoning to Neighborhood Services to incorporate businesses that will be complementary to the neighborhood. I believe this is pretty straightforward, so I don't want to take up excess time for other petitions, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Second.
The motion that's been made and properly seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous for. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 45, rezoning petition 2022-136 by Vision Ventures on approximately 1.64 acres, located along the 1.64 acres located along the southeast, excuse me, along the east side of Catalina Avenue, south of West 28th Street, and north of West 26th Street in Council District 1, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is R5 single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is UR2 urban residential conditional. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design. There are only speakers for this, so after staff's presentation, petitioner Mr. McVane, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you, 2022-136. It's about 1.6 acres located on Catalina Avenue. It's currently zoned R5. The proposed zoning is for UR2 conditional. You can see you've got lots of UR2 there just to the rear of the site. The adopted place type for this particular stretch of Catalina Avenue is Neighborhood 2. There is, or excuse me, Neighborhood 1, there is Neighborhood 2 directly adjacent to the rear, and also there's some Neighborhood 2, we can't quite see it just off the map, just south of Catalina Avenue at the intersection with Catalina and West 27th Street. This proposal is for up to 26 single-family attached units. The buildings with frontage along Catalina Avenue would be no more than four units per building. They would have a max height of 38 feet. They're also generally in line with the existing structures along Catalina Avenue. Buildings in the rear of the site would be no more than 150 feet in length and 46 feet in height, and they would commit to install a 12-foot Class C buffer with a 6-foot screening fence on the northern and southern property boundaries. You can see that both on either side of the plan in green. Does provide internally located visitor spaces, and then there is proposed on-street parking spaces, 10 of those on Catalina Avenue. Accesses be provided from two driveways along Catalina Ave. Would also provide an 8-foot planting strip and 8-foot sidewalk along that road frontage, and then 5-foot sidewalks along the internal private alleyways. 33-foot setback again would be provided along with a 10-foot rear yard. Also commits to capping and shielding on new lighting to 15 feet, and proposes a minimum of 400 square feet of open space private for each unit, as well as architectural standards for each of those units. Again, staff does recommend approval of this petition. We do have some outstanding issues for site and building design to work through. This is a project that does have adjacencies with multifamily that's currently under construction just to the rear. We're less than about a mile from Camp North End, so staff did feel like it was a reasonable spot for some minor infill. No homes are being removed or replaced for this project, although lots I believe are vacant. So again, we do recommend approval upon resolution of those issues, and we will take any questions following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McVane. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of zoning committee, Keith McVane with Morvyn Allen assisting Vision Ventures, the petitioner for the site. With me tonight representing the petitioner is Greg McAllister. He's available to answer questions. We want to thank Dave and his staff for their assistance with this petition and their support. As Dave mentioned, just over, just under two acres located on Catalina between 28th and 26th, currently vacant, is abutting existing multifamily communities that are currently under development in the North Tryon Hills area. Just a little bit closer view of the same site. The formerly approved plan for the area, the North Tryon Hills plan, did recommend this sort of transition between the higher-density area of Tryon Hills here and the lower-density area here. Talked about plans of this type of smaller infill plans could be supported if there's a reduction in scale and density, which is what we're proposing. That's also consistent with the N1 place type, which does support a small infill communities like this as a transition along collector streets like Catalina, as Dave has mentioned. Here's a proposed plan. Catalina is at the top. We are doing streetscape improvements, including on-street parking. There's buffers, 12-foot buffer planted to a 16-foot Class C standard that also includes a fence. There's additional tree save areas and landscaping here. There's separation, additional separation beyond the buffer on both sides, and then we do have multifamily to the rear, which there'll be a landscaped area here on our, on the property as well as on the adjacent multifamily. The units are all served by an internal alley. Each unit will have a garage, and they will front on Catalina, and then they'll front a landscape area on the back. We will work with Dave to address the remaining outstanding issues. We have limited the height of the townhomes along Catalina to two stories effectively, and no more, and a combination of triplexes, three triplexes and one quadruplex, and have limited the size of the units at the rear as well. Again, same view of the site plan here. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would just like to thank the developer for going through the revisions. We have reviewed multiple revisions here, and this one is better suited for this location, has additional access points and additional tree save green space as well. So thank you for working with us to get to a better solution.
You're welcome. Councilmember Anderson, thank you.
Motion to close hearing.
Ms. Mayfield's recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Vatine, question for you. Do we have bike lanes or do we have proposed bike lanes along Catalina?
No, we do not.
So, because I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for working with the council representation as well as the community. I'm thinking about the setbacks in the parking that is noted on here on the street and want to make sure that if, as we have conversations about mobility, if there are going to be bike lanes that eventually are going to come along this area, if we're being forward-thinking on developments now to make sure that we leave space when we're looking at a new development. So you're saying on record that we do not have any bike lanes that are being, that will be proposed for Catalina?
No, not that I'm, we don't have any existing bike lanes. I'm not aware of any proposed bike lanes on Catalina.
Thank you.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. McCary has been seconded.
Yes, I was seconded.
Ms. Anderson has been seconded by Ms. Ashmira. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous to close the public hearing. Mayor Protem? We'll move on to item number 46, rezoning petition 2022-152 by Vinroy Reed, located on approximately .87 acres on the southeast side of Sharmak Lane, north of Monroe Road, and east of North Wendover Road in Council District 5, Ms. Bellinas district. The current zoning is R5 single-family residential and O2 office. The proposed zoning is B2 CD general business conditional, and staff recommends approval of this petition. There is opposition to this petition, so after staff's presentation. The petitioner will have 10 minutes, and so will the opposition.
All right, thank you, 2022-152. It's .87 acres at the end of Sharmak Lane, just off of Monroe Road. As mentioned, currently zoned O2 for the predominant part of the site, R5 just on the back end of the site as well. Adopted place type is Neighborhood Center. The proposal, we've had this petition come through earlier as a conventional petition. There was lots of conversation about adding some conditions to that B2 district. The conditions that have been worked on are really a limitation of uses. You can see there's quite a lot of uses that would be restricted as a result should this petition be approved. Things like jails, prisons, drive-through facilities, hotels, motels, automotive sales and repairs, gas stations, et cetera, have all been prohibited should this, again, this petition be approved with these conditions. Also, there are some conditions around outdoor uses of the site and restrictions on the hours of operation, things like outdoor uses being restricted between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, music and entertainment limited between 11:00 AM and 8:30 PM during the week, and then 11 to 10 Friday to Saturday. Also, conditions on live amplified outdoor performances, also restriction that would state if onsite alcohol is provided, then the use must also include food service, and then any ventilation or fan associated with any food and beverage use would be located either on the roof or on the Sharmak Lane frontage, so not adjacent to some of those single-family residential uses back there to the rear. Again, staff does recommend approval of the petition. There are quite a few conditions that, again, restrict some of those uses and add some conditions for similar scenarios that we've seen with proposals like this, where you've got potential EDEs with some outdoor activity against single-family residential. We're certainly aware of some of the concerns. I believe we'll hear from some of the community members about some of that, which, you know, we'll get through from both sides of this hearing. But again, staff is currently recommending approval. We'll be happy to take questions following the petitioner's presentation and presentations from the public. Thank you.
Vinroy Reed, petitioner, you have up to 10 minutes.
Yes. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. It's been my great pleasure and honor to come before you today to make a presentation that's going to be a great addition to the east side. I think that, you know, it's a lot of times we own some properties in the east side, and you get approached all the time by developer to develop them, and sometimes it's out of our means to do so, but this, what I'm trying to do is within my means. I'm a general contractor. I'm a small business owner in this district. I purchased this property some 10 years ago to develop a very unique space. It's called a destination restaurant with a bakery and a space to do outside dining and also to share my culture through music and stuff, but also taking in consideration the community that I am also doing it in. So my first approach was to get it zoned B2, but, you know, we had some pushback, so prior to that, we have community meetings, which I went to, and we discussed that with the community. I brought some food to let the folks know this is what I'm about to do here. We went back to do a conditional B2, where I had another community meeting in order to meet my community where they're at and decide where this is going to be at. So again, I pull out my grill, cook some food, send a lot of letters out to the community for all the community to come out and, you know, let's have a conversation on what it is I propose to bring to this neighborhood. I think we had at least five or six people to come. I mailed out at least 80 letters, right? So I put in the work, and, you know, so if anyone had some opposition, I think that was then, and I think this is what a neighborhood should be about. If someone's going to do something in your neighborhood and go through all that work to bring the community together, then if you're going to have something to say, that's the place to do it. What I'm planning to do here is going to bring jobs, it's going to bring opportunity to this community, just like I did 22 years ago with my restaurant located in Plaza Midwood. It took me one year working with the city to get it approved because there was no parking in that area. 22 years later, I spend, you know, I pay in revenue hundreds of thousands back to the city. So I'm a dreamer, but I'm one that wake up and willing to implement what my dream is in this community. So I'm asking you for your consideration to give me that opportunity to install something that will help our young people see that if you dream and you wake up, you can live it.
Thank you very much. Leo Thurdo. Oh, there he goes, coming on. You have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Winston, coach, I should say, and all of council. I figured since I've peppered most of you with copies of emails, I should at least show up tonight. I live at 700 Crater Street by my house in 2013. I'm an east side guy. I love the east side. I think the Oakhurst neighborhood and things that are happening on the east side are great. Unfortunately, this north side of Monroe Road, close to the Wendover Road area, is not really getting the attention I think it deserves. I hope that we get more. And first off, I want to applaud Vinroy for trying to do something good with his property because the same can't be said for a lot of the property owners on that corner. As far as his cooking and his restaurant idea, top notch. He saw me chow down on Mama's Stuff at his first community meeting. I let him know that I could not make it to his last one, but I shared same concerns I'm going to give you tonight. Restaurant idea, awesome. The idea of outdoor events with live music, with amplified live music, is very concerning and I don't think appropriate for its proximity to the homeowners in the area, and the future homeowners that will be on the backside of his property in the context at Oakhurst Townhome That's pretty much my main concern. If he does open this restaurant, you know, it looks like there will be a parking lot that I have concerns about, safety possibilities, lights shining in my backyard. I guess we don't have the PowerPoint that had pictures that, this is the view from my backyard. It shows where, if we go to the next one, it shows where past events have been held in what I assume will be the parking lot area. This was the stage set up. You can see my fence there, that's on my fence line. The sound and the noise from this music was really intense inside and outside. Inside, windows shaking, lungs thumping with the bass. It's really, really tough to take. It's close. If we keep going through, you've also heard, I think in writing, from my immediate neighbors who are even closer than me, if we keep going through, at 636 Crater Street, and the next one, that's the stage set up. Keep going. I don't want to bore people with all these photos, but I just want to give you an idea of what this looks like. This is his neighbor at 632. If that is not going to be a part of the outdoor festival, concerts, big wedding events, that kind of thing, you know, maybe this isn't a concern, but from what was detailed in his notes, it asked for live music for potentially every day of the week, for many hours a day, and then on the weekends, when homeowners want to be outside and enjoying their property, not listening to, you know, the wedding and things dancing. We already have problems with the Bacardi Lounge up on Monroe Road, which is indoor music, and Vinroy can attest that that bothers him. So those are my main concerns. I know that my neighbors have sent emails to council on planning and zoning, and Stuart Fleagle, business owner, has mentioned concerns with just the area being developed right. So I hope if nothing else, we'll get planning, zoning, council to look more at what's going on, on the commercial side, the business side, and help out this area of Monroe Road. But I applaud Vinroy for trying to do something good. I just don't think that outdoor events and loud music, amplified music is a good thing for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Leo called me coach because we used to coach our kids' soccer team together on the lawn of Johnston YMCA many, many years ago.
VIP.
Yeah, right.
What was your record?
We were champions. Ms. Ashmira, what's that? Oh, yes, you get two minutes for rebuttal if you desire.
Yes, so if we're talking about caring for your neighbor, this is a space that I've been using since 2013. We have the Jerk Festival there once a year, and so there was some conversation with my neighbor about noise and how we could control that. And, you know, again, I think we have a nice ordinance within this city anyway, like people have, but I am a very considerate neighbor, so I do take what he's saying into consideration. That's why we sit down with staff and come up with a plan to make certain that whatever we do is about making certain that neighborhood is benefiting from what we do. So I do understand my neighbor saying, you know, the noise, but sometimes, you know, we live in a multicultural- live in a multicultural society where you get people to celebrate and do business differently. And so, you know, I'm bringing a change to our community and I'm hoping that working with my neighbors and the surrounding area, we won't be playing the music that loud to where he can enjoy it. So that was one of the concern he has. So, you know, that's my feedback to that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. If you could stay there, Mr. Reed, just a couple of questions. So Speaker Leo raised some concerns around late event, like late night event. And I was looking at B2 rezoning, and it says that outdoor music and entertainment shall be limited to the hours of Sunday through Thursday till 8:30 p.m. So, Mr. Leo, if you could come up here. Are you aware of limitation under B2 that outdoor users will have some restrictions to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? Are you aware of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so what would you like the hours to be?
It depends.
Vinroy. Mr. Reed, if you can just step aside.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that just the idea of going through more events like I've gone through is very scary.
Okay, so from what I hear, you say you're not concerned about the hours, but you would not like to see any outdoor event, is that...
I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, okay. Other question I have, so under B2 rezoning, there are multiple uses that are allowed with especially recycling centers, and I would be concerned about that if I was your neighbor. Adult establishments? So are we limiting, when you talk about rezoning under B2, is there a specific language where you're saying this will only be limited to restaurants?
So I can answer that one as well. So what's on the screen here, all those lists, all those uses listed would be prohibited. So you couldn't do a recycling center, you couldn't do temporary buildings, you couldn't do tire recapping or retreading or any kind of adult establishment or hotel or motel. So all those uses listed, they're actually prohibited?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To Councilwoman Ashmira's point, I think it would be clearer if the conditions would be to what Vinroy wants to do and then eliminate everything else instead of all these exceptions.
So I guess that's one, Mr. Reed, would you be open to have a specific language where use will be limited to only restaurant?
No, because the, what I'm trying to bring is a celebratory term of culture. And again, I work with staff to come up with these different exceptions to the B2. And that's where we reach this juncture of saying, okay, these are the things that you're not gonna be able to do here. And so I agree to those list that staff recommend. So I already devalue what my property is in order to, you know, to make necessary adjustment that would not create those issues like landfill and all that.
I think our council meeting just converted into B2. Okay, well, I think I have the answers that I was looking for. I think Mr. Leo raises some valid concerns. If you have kids that are young and if you, and if there is a festival going on right behind in your backyard, literally, you know, I would be concerned. So I don't know if you all can take it offline and talk about maybe additional buffer that might help. But I'm hoping some of these concerns can be addressed because he's right. You know, I have two little ones and I would be worried because they may not be able to take a nap in the afternoon.
You know, there's elderly people who've had to leave their house.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Ashmira didn't inform a question, so there wasn't, there's no response.
But I think this is something offline that you could work through, and I'm sure Ms. Molina has a lot in her plate, but I know she's been very diligent about addressing concerns and questions. So I hope to see some sort of resolution on these issues because these are valid concerns. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I want to piggyback off what council member Ashmira said, that I hope you can work together. We, this is, this reminds me of a petition in NODA last year, two of them, that this council approved. And I want to ask Mr. Petten, perhaps there was something in that petition the neighbors were concerned, and I remember that petition, that was like feet away from a resident. So I don't know if the city offered something or if there was some solution that was offered to that developer so that the petitioner could have the petition approved.
Yeah, so we, a lot of the conditions that came forward and show up here this evening were really almost a straight borrowing of those conditions that were conducive to those petitions in NODA. I think there were two or three around the same time, two in NODA, one in Belmont, and had a lot of the same types of conditions that seemed to address some of those neighbor concerns. But of course, every neighborhood is different, every concern and proximity is a little bit different. So, you know, these were kind of presented as a starting point. So now that we've started to have this conversation and know what some of the community concerns are, we'll continue to work with both parties as well to kind of try to facilitate some of those, you know, solutions that get this in a place where everybody can be a little bit more comfortable at the end of the day. But the starting point was based on those petitions that you had mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. So follow up, my colleague was going down the same path that I was thinking. So Mr. Petten, can you help me understand, is this potential, is this request different than what we currently have in NODA area as well as Belmont area and even in South End regarding outdoor entertainment that is close to residential when we talk about placemaking and the other goals that we have? Is this petition outside of that norm?
No, these, these conditions are almost similar, almost exact as what we've seen approved in other petitions where we have a restaurant that might have outdoor seating, might have music, you know, in the evenings. They were essentially taken as an example and built into this petition. Again, it's just a starting point. They can always be tweaked and modified, but that's where we got the basis for some of these conditions from.
And where we have our language in here, as far as outdoor uses shall be restricted between hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., as well as limitations on the music time from Sunday through Thursday, that's based on our current language that is being utilized for other venues that are similar to this venue that are in or near residential.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you very much. Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I, first off, I'd like to acknowledge that and agree with the community member who took the time to come. In District 5, it's important that we have community members, all community members, with hands on deck because we are a community of 128,000 people. And so it's a big community, very diverse. The geographic area is enormous, and the diversity is not just race, it's more economic than it is racial. And so I think when we even say that word, we have to make sure that we place the context where it belongs. We're talking about some conditions, and I'm a huge proponent of when someone from the community and someone from the development community can work together and find a happy medium, but right now we don't look like we have that. So if this was a petition that was in front of me as the representative, I wouldn't be in support, simply because of the discomfort that it creates for the existing residents. I've gotten about four emails, five I believe, from different residents that are surrounding this area, and they echo those same concerns. I don't know if the conditions are something that are malleable, but I think it would be the same for anybody, and I actually, not based on the precedent, because a lot of what we do as people who have the opportunity to inform policy, we do that based on prior decisions. So anytime we've set a precedent, we can say yes best on that precedent, and so that argument stands. But I think what we set sometimes in that precedent is where community members feel left out and where development actually pushes past them, where it feels like as a community member, development is happening to you instead of happening for you. And so the best way to make sure that you mitigate that, where you create an environment for the community member as well as the development community, is where you can meet in the middle. So I'm happy that this is just at the hearing stage. I'm encouraged that there will be some additional conversations. And Mr. Petten, I just want to make sure that I'm clear because we're back at a second petition, am I correct? So what was the first request?
So the first request was just straight B2 conventional, no conditions, no restrictions, every use allowed under B2, hours of operation would be per B2. So none of these conditions were part of the original proposal. So this now becomes a conditional petition. The conditions, as you kind of mentioned earlier, are malleable, they are able to be tweaked and modified based on conversations with the community and the petitioner and staff. So again, this is just a starting point. We can continue to tweak these and modify these as needed to try and address some of these concerns and hopefully get to that, that spot where everybody is a little bit more comfortable with it, and hopefully that will continue to happen.
And just to be clear, Mr. Reed, you're saying that you are not in favor of any type of condition? This is a, this is a B2 conditional petition, but you don't want conditions?
I have conversation with staff, with council member, and staff and council member put together this condition. I agree with the condition, and that's why we're here today. That's why staff support what's on the board, because that is conducive with what they've been doing in other neighborhoods around Charlotte. So I went with what staff recommendation is. I went ahead and did a second neighborhood meeting where I went in and I did everything that staff asked me to do to get to this point, so I could get on with my business. The folks that is calling you and writing you did not come to the meeting. So, and that is, that is why I'm saying, if community is gonna work with you, they're gonna show up to these meetings, because this is a part of the whole reason why we have community meetings. You can't have someone, don't come to your meeting to talk about the issues that they have and then show up at a hearing, advising all these concern and saying everybody else is saying the same thing, because that's not what I hear at this meeting. I am here, I fill out the agenda of the meeting, I send it in to staff, the folks that was there, they sign their name, they put their number down, and they show up. And, you know, I planned for as many people, and six people showed up there. This didn't show up.
But I sent an email.
Right? So he's right there, he's like two houses down from my property. And that's what I'm saying. If community and, you know, I am not considered a developer, I am a neighbor, someone that lived in the community, who want to do business in their community, and it seems like I've been getting nothing but pushback.
Well, Mr. Reed, I want to make sure that I tell you that, you know, I don't, I don't want you to feel discouraged. You are a business owner in the, you know, you have a business on Secretor Avenue that plenty of people have, you know, patronized. I, so when we talk about our community members, however, because you understand this process, you've been in this process quite a few times, our community members don't know how this process works. Most of the time, if they contact us, that's what they know to do. They don't understand the nine steps because they don't have to, right? The civic process as their leaders, it's our, it's our responsibility to interpret that for them and try to plug them in where they can actually have their voices heard too. So I doubt that it's intentional that the community members with concerns are not showing up. I would be willing to wager that they don't understand the process in the same way that you or I do. So most of the time, what they'll do is contact us and say, these are the concerns we have and this is why. So that may be what the disconnect is, and when you're trying to make that open opportunity available for them to come and say to you, this is what we feel and this is why, that may be why they don't show up. Or even what they fear is confrontation, right? Because you're a development person, I mean, and you don't seem, I know you, I've known you for many years. It's not that you're being confrontational, it's that they may view it as that. They come and they stand in front of you and you want to make this change, and you're saying this, but they don't agree with you. So they're coming to this intimate space that is made by you to tell you that they don't agree. That takes a lot of courage. That takes a lot of courage for a community member to do that. And so a lot of the times, the community member won't, you know, engage directly. They'll contact their council members or city staff. So I want to make sure that I illustrate that part to you, to make sure that, you know, there's not a disconnect in what I receive or what any other member of council may receive, that it seems to be or appears to be directly in opposition of what you would like to do with your property.
Well, I understand, and like I said, this recommendation came from staff, working with, I think you also was on the line when we spoke about making the different changes to this petition. So you're there to represent not only the neighbors, but also the folks that's doing business within that community. And if there was that concern, this is not the place for us to have it tonight. I think this is something that we should have had prior meetings with yourself and the community meeting.
Well, you've changed the petition, so that, I think now we have a new hearing. This is a new process. So it's not a failure on my part, Mr. Reed. This is a changed petition, and now you're agreeing to certain conditions, and so you're back in front of council because your petition is changed. It's not that you're working in continuity. The process is when you start your petition, you go through your petition process. So this is now a new opportunity for you to visit your petition with now what you're now recommending versus what you initially recommended. Am I correct, Mr. Pet?
Yeah, and just to be clear on the conditions, we again, have examples of when we've had this context of an EDE or restaurant next to residential, that's where the conditions were started from. We never intend those to be the end-all-be-all set of conditions. They are conditions to start with, they are conditions to start that community conversation. Community meeting is one step in that. The public hearing is really an extension of that opportunity for the community to provide input. They don't have to go necessarily just to the community meeting. This is just as much of a community meeting for them on this petition as it was a week or two ago when that was held, you know, in a location that was closer to the site. So, you know, again, these were taken as context from existing examples. We fully intended those to be part of the conversation with the community if we need to change and tweak those. I think then that's where the conversation between the petitioner and the community starts to, you know, develop those and hone those conditions in a little bit better. But that's where those conditions came from. They were never intended to be. These are exactly what staff would want to see. This is really just a starting point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pet. Mr. Pro Tim, I'm done.
Ms. Bacari?
Yeah, I just, at a macro level, after having listened to everything and looking at the uniqueness of the site, I think that, I think that... at the uniqueness of the site, I think that using the precedent that has been set a couple times tonight in different parts of town, may not feel exactly right on its own to warrant just a carte blanche approval of this. Places like NODA and others that have been cited, I mean, those are, they feel different. And again, I'm just looking at the map. It looks like when you look north from this property, it looks like you're just in somebody's backyard. And then when you look south, it looks like you're looking like at a commercial center. So I would just say, given that while there is precedent, that this kind of thing might seem standard, based on what we've heard, what we've heard from the district rep, and just looking at these pictures, I would suggest the next month, if the community and the petitioner doesn't come together, it feels like it's going to be probably not that good. So my strong recommendation to you would be, regardless of what happened to get to this point, you guys really see what you can do, and at the end of the day, that might mean less of a speculative rezoning, that you can do stuff or can't do in this case, and more of a negotiating with them to say, does this make you comfortable? Because I have a gut feeling it ain't going to go well for you in a month if that doesn't happen.
I have a question for Mr. Petten. Does anything change from the allowed uses on June 1st, once the UDO, if that gets translated?
Yeah, so this will go, it is, let's see, O2, I think, in R5. So this would go to like an OFC district and a Neighborhood 1 district. So OFC is a fairly limited zoning district, so a lot of the uses that are in B2 don't exist in OFC in the UDO. And of course, they don't exist in Neighborhood 1. You know, retail establishments are really only allowed in Neighborhood 1 as either an existing kind of neighborhood-serving commercial site that was already in place, but it wouldn't allow a new use like this on that R5 portion either. So none of this would be...
On the O2 portion?
Right, correct. Yeah, it would not be an allowed use in the O2. And that would translate to OFC. Now, that's really just Office District, and that's about it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Motion closed the public hearing.
Chair?
All in favor, any discussion there, motion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion, that public hearing is closed. Move on to item number 47, rezoning petition 2022-156 by Gray Star Development East LLC for approximately 10.82 acres on the southeast intersection of South Tryon Street and Nations Ford Road, south of West Woodlawn Road, and west of Interstate 77, Council District 3, Ms. Watlington's district. The current zoning is B1 neighborhood business, B2 general business, and I1 CD light industrial conditional. The proposed zoning is mud CD mixed-use development district conditional, and staff at this time does not recommend approval of this petition in its current form. This item does have speakers against. After staff's presentation, the petitioner will have 10 minutes.
All right, thank you. 2022-156, it's just shy of 11 acres on Nations Ford and South Tryon, just right there at the intersection or interchange of I-77 North with Exit 6B. It is currently zoned B1, B2, and I1 conditional, and the proposed zoning is for mud conditional. Adopted place type on the policy map does call for commercial. You can see this is a fairly heavily commercial place type recommended area along Yorkmont, South Tryon, Nations Ford, extending even onto the north side of West Woodlawn Road. This proposal is for up to 350 multifamily dwelling units, and then one building, you can see that's highlighted there in red, up to 5,000 square feet for non-residential use. Non-residential uses would allow things like restaurant, educational uses, indoor recreation, professional business, general office, retail sales, and personal service and studios. Would prohibit accessory drive-through lanes and windows. Max building height would be 50 feet, and minimum floor height would be 10 feet 6 inches. Does depict gated entries into the parking area for those multifamily buildings. Also provides vehicular access through a right-in, right-out on South Tryon, and then a full movement intersection on Nations Ford Road. And then a new public street would extend along the southern edge of the site. Also would construct a right-turn lane on South Tryon at the site's driveway, as well as remove existing curb cuts and establish a continuous curb and gutter along that site frontage. Would also re-stripe Nations Ford Road and a new public street to provide a full-width left-turn lane onto that new street there that provides access along the southern property line. Would also construct a CATS bus pad on Nations Ford Road near the intersection with South Tryon, and construct an eight-foot planning strip and 12-foot multi-use path along South Tryon, and then eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planning strip along Nations Ford Road. Architectural standards have been built into the petition as well. Again, staff does not recommend approval of this petition in its current form. It is inconsistent with the policy map recommendation for commercial. I think our general sentiment is that we'd like to see some additional square footage for that commercial outcome. Not saying that residential is completely non-starter in this area, but I believe that if we did see some residential, the predominant place type being commercial, we'd like to see a better balance between some of those uses. This is an existing commercial center for this general area of the community. We'd like to see some of that reincorporated into the site, and we're just not quite there yet at a staff level. So that's staff's recommendation, and we'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation and presentation from the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have several speakers for John Carmichael. I believe you'll be coordinating speakers for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. Members of council, the zoning committee, I'm John Carmichael here on behalf of the petitioner, Gray Star Development LLC. With me tonight are Josh Glover and Andrew Phelan of the petitioner, and Thomas Hapapuro of Design Resource Group. As Mr. Petten stated, the site contains about 10.82 acres, is located on the east side of the intersection of South Tryon Street and Nations Ford Road. It's just to the south of the Billy Graham-South Tryon Street-Woodlawn Road intersection. And I-77 is to the east of the site. This is an aerial photograph of the site. The site is outlined in green on the photograph. The site currently contains approximately 62,687 square feet of retail uses, 1,485 square feet of general office uses, and 1,878 square feet of warehouse uses. Those numbers were derived from CDOT's memo in connection with this petition. This is a series of photographs of the site as viewed from South Tryon Street and Nations Ford Road. The pictures start at the northern edge of the site on South Tryon Street, and then progress in a southerly direction to the southern edge of the site on Nations Ford Road. One thing you may notice from the pictures is that there are a lot of existing curb cuts into the site from the streets, and we'll discuss the curb cuts in a little while. But once again, this is the northern edge of the site, looking into the site from South Tryon. And then we're progressing to the south, as I mentioned. This is looking into the site from South Tryon, as is this view. And then this is, after you've turned the corner, onto Nations Ford, looking into the And then this is another view into the site from Nations Ford. You can see the curb cuts once again. Then finally, this is the southern edge of the site from Nations Ford, at the, once again, the southern boundary of the site. So the site is currently zoned B2, B1, and I1 CD. Parcels to the west and east of the site are zoned B1, B1 CD, B2, and B2 CD. The parcel to the south of the site are zoned R4, O1, and I1. The petitioner is requesting that the site be rezoned to the mud CD zoning district to accommodate a multi-use development on the site that would contain up to 350 multifamily dwelling units, 5,000 square feet of gross floor area devoted to non-residential uses, and live-work units on the ground floors of the three buildings that front Nations Ford Road. The commercial building and the live-work units are very, very recent additions in an effort and desire to make the request more compatible with the 2040 policy map. Now, a live-work unit is a multifamily unit in which the front third of the unit is commercial space, and the rear two-thirds of the unit is a dwelling unit that's occupied by the owner or the operator of the commercial space. The unit would have a commercial appearance along the street and the sidewalk, and there being access from the sidewalk into the commercial portion of that unit. The live-work unit would support small businesses that can serve the area, as well as entrepreneurs, and the 5,000 square feet could also support services that serve the area as well. I previously mentioned the curb cuts, and this is a curb cut exhibit that shows the existing curb cuts into the site. There are currently nine curb cuts into the site. The proposed development will reduce the number of curb cuts to two. We believe this would benefit the flow of traffic on South Tryon Street and Nations Ford Road, and create a safer pedestrian and vehicular environment. This is the site plan. The site plan is bifurcated here by an intermittent stream, as you can see. Access into the site would be from a right-in, right-out only movement here. This is actually, this plan is turned, so this is the north, this is the south. So there'd be one access point from South Tryon Street here, it'd be right-in and right-out. There'd be a second access point into the site from Nations Ford Road here along the southern edge. Is that been 10 minutes, Mr. Mayor Protim?
No, that's...
Somebody's following.
You're good.
You have five minutes.
And this is, would be a new public street as an access point, and there'd be on-street parking here on the new public street. 11 multifamily buildings are proposed, and an amenity building here. This would be a 5,000-square-foot non-residential building adjacent to the new public street. Once again, the live-work units here would be on the ground floors of these three buildings that front Nations Ford Road. The petitioner would install an eight-foot planning strip and an eight-foot sidewalk along the site's frontage on Nations Ford Road, then an eight-foot planning strip and a 12-foot sidewalk along the site's frontage on South Tryon Street. So the combination of the reduction of curb cuts, the plane strips, the sidewalks, and the multi-use path, once again, would approve pedestrian mobility along the site's public street frontages. Architectural standards for the multifamily units are a part of the proposal. As Mr. Petten stated, the maximum building height for the multifamily buildings would be 50 feet. The petitioner would, I'm sorry, y'all. The petitioner would, come on. Sorry. The petitioner would install a right-turn lane on South Tryon Street into this access point, the northernmost access point, and would provide a full-width left-turn lane on Nations Ford Road into the southernmost access point. In terms of traffic and pedestrian considerations, I've mentioned the reduction in curb cuts, I've mentioned the pedestrian improvements that would be installed, and the streetscape improvements that would be installed along Nations Ford Road and South Tryon Street. According to the CDOT memo, the proposed use would generate less trips than the current use of the site, and a potential redevelopment of the site under the existing zoning. We understand and respect staff's position on this, that they're not recommending approval due to the inconsistency with the 2040 policy map. We respectfully submit that the site is a good location for the proposed uses from a land use standpoint and a transportation standpoint. We appreciate your consideration, and our team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I introduce the speakers against, part of my decorum, I did not recognize the Honorable County Commissioner Vil Malik from District 2, who is in the building tonight. So thank you for joining us, Ms. Malik. I know you were here to participate in this zoning petition, so thank you for joining us. We do have speakers in opposition. We have six people, Shirley Allen, Frances McCree, Brianna Capel, Virginia Keough, the Honorable Vil Malik, and Donna Knapp. You all have 10 minutes to split up as you see fit.
Mayor Protim, can I make a point of order? Can I ask a question before they start?
You can take your way down.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the city attorney, we have a total of about 30 speakers combined with these two petitions tonight. And as a technicality, I wanted to know if they were advised that they would have to limit their time among the whole group to 10 minutes? I can't imagine that they were advised, especially when you have folks like our county commissioner and a former city employee, retired employee Stanley Watkins from our zoning department. So I would ask, due to that, first of all, if they were advised, and if they were not advised from that technicality, could we make perhaps a motion to suspend those rules today? Because we do have members of our public that have taken the time to come out. And if you all don't, if 10 minutes is okay, then that's fine. But I want to give you, okay. I want to give you the, okay, all right. Well, if you're okay with that, then I'm okay. Thank you. Okay, okay, great. You sure you'd have two minutes apiece? Like, okay, good. Thank you. I withdraw my concern. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good evening, Sir Woman Watlington, that's our council lady. My name is Shirley Allen. I'm here representing the Yorkmont community. We're gravely concerned regarding Gray Star Development East LLC's petition 2022-156, and the request to have zoning changed from a commercial development to multifamily units, which encompass approximately 10.82 acres located at the southeast intersection of South Tryon Street and Nations Ford Road, south of West Woodlawn Road, and west of Interstate 77. If approved, these units will become one of many currently being constructed in the vicinity of Presley Road, South Boulevard, Woodlawn Road, Tivola Road, and a proposed housing unit to be located near the same intersection on South Tryon. Due to the fact there was no infrastructure plan to accommodate this unprecedented traffic, residents of the Yorkmont community are being boxed in. Traffic comes to a standstill during morning and evening rush hour traffic. The intersection of Nations Ford and Yorkmont is blocked to the point drivers run red lights, block intersections, and pedestrians are being dodged as if they are in a volleyball match. Prior to any new construction, the intersection of Yorkmont Road, Nations Ford Road, and South Tryon Street were already heavily congested. When there is an accident on 77 North or South, traffic diverse to Woodlawn Road, Nations Ford Road, Tivola Road, South Tryon, and creating unimaginable traffic jams for Yorkmont residents. In addition to units under development and being proposed, the Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge, although pending, is also due for replacement soon. This construction alone will cause massive traffic diversion, excuse me, for everyone traveling in this corridor. If you approve 2022-156, Yorkmont residents will be deprived of access to a barber shop, beauty shop, POTS Hardware, a tax center, automobile dealership, Chicken King Restaurant, Lynn's Speakeasy, insurance agency, churches, two social events planners, dry cleaners, and a myriad of other locally owned and operated minority businesses within walking distance that would otherwise need to be accessed by car, bus, or train. We, as a community, understand and appreciate Charlotte's growth. However, we feel replacement of the strip model is a great injustice, not only to Yorkmont, but to many minority businesses owners located in the center. Approval of this petition will take food out of their mouths at a time when the government is cutting back on or canceling family assistance programs made in place during COVID. As a community, we hold you accountable, and ask that on behalf of the people, your constituents, that the city council deny Gray Star Development East LLC's petition 2022-156 in favor of the Yorkmont community, and not allow rezoning from a commercial development site to a multifamily unit compound. It is so much easier to grant permission than to experience the consequences. Thank you.
You have six minutes and six seconds left.
It won't take me but a minute. My name is counsel, and to everybody that's sitting on the board there, I would like to also emphasize that there's one more thing that everybody seems to be leaving out in this situation is, if you look up on that board there and look at South 77, and look at exactly where 77 actually is sitting, we're like in a little triangle there. And not only that, all that traffic up through there, Nations Ford is a two-lane road, not a four-lane. Your South Tryon is four-lane, and we still get, I have sit and got out of my car, walked home, went home, ate, took a shower, got back, come back to my car, and still was sitting. home, went home, ate, took a shower, got back, come back to my car, and still was sitting in traffic. This is ridiculous. I mean, come on, let's be real. It's really, it's really just crazy down through there, and don't let nothing happen. That particular bridge that she's referring to, that bridge definitely needs to be replaced because if you look at that bridge, you can look at it and see where the rubber part is, is separating. And it ain't gonna be long before that bridge gonna virtually give out. That's the one that the train go up under. Now, they also want to come on down further. If you look at this map, Nation Ford Road, it ain't but two lanes, one up and one down. You're getting ready to put 700-plus people in that one area. Because it's gonna be at least two adults there and whatever children they have. So you gotta look at all this capacity coming, traffic in there, and then you come on down South Tryon from the apartments there. Okay, to the graveyard, you're getting ready to put some condos there. So count that traffic, too. That's all I'm asking you to do.
Thank you.
You have 4 minutes, 15 seconds.
Did you have Brianna Cable on there? I don't know if she's here or not.
Yes, I have Brianna Cable on there.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Winston, city council members and staff. My name is Virginia Keough, and I am the founder and president of Southwest Area Neighborhood Coalition. And I'm here tonight to support the Yorkmont community and the other surrounding communities in the area. We ask, we want to urge you to vote no on this development. More multifamily housing in the Steel Creek area is a negative. If you approve multifamily housing in an area that is already inundated with thousands of apartments, you're harming the residents that you were hired to help, and most important, possibly diminishing the quality of life. I did want to talk about 10-minute neighborhoods, but due to the discussion that you guys had earlier, I won't go into that. But I'm imploring you to vote no to approve the 2022-156 rezoning petition. We have a hard time breathing in Steel Creek as it is. Please allow us to exhale. Thank you.
Is Ms. Vilma calling?
Yeah.
Wait. Yeah. They're gonna stop. No, they're gonna stop. You know. Good. I'm on the phone. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Vilma DeLeek, and I represent the most powerful district in this county, and that's District Two. You've heard the young lady say she could go home, take a bath, go to sleep, and get up, and the cars still there. Cars are still there. I believe her because I drive that route every day, coming to the government center. So I'm asking you to vote no. Think about the people, our senior citizens. Think about the crowdedness that we have and the violence that we have in this community. And it's not always about money. And I'm begging you, as elected people who were elected by these people sitting behind me, did I just say the most powerful district in the county? Stand up, people. Stand up. So we're asking you, and we're begging you, to do the right thing for the right people at the right time. I sit on this county commissioners board that deals strictly with money and wraparound services that serve this same community. So I'm asking you to do the right thing. The other piece I wanted to say is, stop the growth. Stop the growth. A moratorium need to take place until we get in order. I'm begging you to save this community, not for two people, but for all of us. The Crescent is where we live, where all the problems are, on the black side of town. And where are the apartment complexes? On the west side of town. So I beg you to stop, S-T-O-P. Do you know what that means? S-T-O-P means stop. So I beg you, I love you, work for this community, and I pray that you would do the right thing. I did not address you when I first got up here, but to our Mayor Pro Tem, we're so proud of you, son, but we've talked about some things. The rest of you, we love you. We will not vote for you if you don't do the right thing. And that goes for you, too. There will be a campaign to empty the, I can say what I want to say up here. Don't look, I can say that, I didn't say anything wrong, son. I didn't say anything wrong. They always want to talk about black women being out of order. I'm black and I'm in order. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael, you have 2 minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We agree on the growth front, we should build a wall.
10. 10 minutes. Have you stopped?
No. No, I'm sorry. And just, if you have any comments that are written down, you can provide it to the clerk, and the clerk will distribute those, those comments to the council and make it part of the record.
I'll give her a minute of my rebuttal. Nope, okay. Well, I'll be brief. We're not going to sit here and argue that traffic's not bad here, because it is. Traffic's bad in Charlotte, and it's bad in that area. I will say that, you know, a commercial development generally is going to generate more traffic than a residential development, and that would be borne out by CDOT's memo. That does, that's not an answer to the traffic's not good, because we understand it's not. We did add some traffic, I mean, some commercial to try to put some neighborhood-serving uses there, but we understand that it's not gonna, it would not replace the 6,000 to 8,000 square feet that's in existence. But we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ashmira, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. I don't have any questions for petitioner or for our staff. I'll just say this, I cannot support this rezoning in its current form. I understand there are concerns around traffic and congestion, but then also concerns around safe mobility, especially for pedestrians. I see where this development is located, it will create just dangerous intersection, especially off of South Tryon and Woodlawn. And we have, in our city, we got to figure out how to keep our people safe, especially those that are pedestrians. We have seen so many lives being lost, and I implore the petitioner to address that concern specifically. But that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Whether this gets approved or not, this is a pretty badly designed intersection or set of intersections. This is a site that is relatively, in the grand scheme of things, not far from a light rail station, but if there were apartments here, I don't know how the folks would walk to that light rail station, because that bridge also doesn't really have a sidewalk. I also drive up there and ride my bike there, and it gets pretty dangerous right at that kind of choke point. Are there any plans to improve the overall alignment or how this intersection or set of intersections works?
I'll turn this over to CDOT, they may have some answers for you on that one.
Good evening. Brandon Brazil with CDOT. So there are not any plans to change the geometry, per se, for Nations Ford and South Tryon Street. However, there is a CIP project currently in place to improve pedestrian access. So there will be signalized crosswalks. There's currently a splitter island there, which we refer to as a pork chop sometimes, it's kind of triangular shaped. That's going to be replaced, and it's going to have pedestrian pass-through access. We're also going to set it up with our CIP team to partner with this developer to provide access across Nations Ford for pedestrians and cyclists to get access to this property as well.
And I heard it mentions about the replacement of the bridge. Whose jurisdiction is that, and do we know what type of potential design they are? Would they create something that actually has a sidewalk on it?
Sure. So our, our design section in CDOT works closely with the NC DOT Rail Division. They're most likely managing that, that project. We can reach out to them and get the status of that, and typically, whenever they replace a bridge, we always ensure that we're getting bicycle and pedestrian access included with that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson?
Can you ask about the timeline?
Is there a timeline for, for that bridge construction?
I can get that one.
And the pedestrian improvements?
Pedestrian.
For the CIP project?
Yes.
It's currently in 90% design. It was supposed to be under construction, but I think they're behind schedule a little bit, so it should be later this year.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out. Thank you, Commissioner, for coming out and sharing your concerns. In December, the council did have a meeting to address the infrastructure of the city and the growth. That was the first infrastructure meeting that this council has had in, in recent history. I was proud to lead that endeavor, along with Councilmember Bakari. So can we have update, Mr. Petten, on what the status of the infrastructure research was and what the next steps are, please? Do we have that information?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm the best one to answer that question.
Allison, can you give us an update on that?
We can get an answer on, on that offline. It's not germane to the specific petition in terms of the next steps of our policy discussion.
That's fine. Well, is that something that Allison can give us? Oh, we can wait, that's fine. But I, but I just want you to know that, that we did address the concern about the growth and the unbalanced growth during an infrastructure session in December. So we, as a council, should be holding staff responsible to give us that information, and we're on it. So, thank you.
Staff has let me know that we will have an update on that next week.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
District report would like to say something.
Swatlington.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Hey, y'all. As Ms. Virginia Keough mentioned, those that you see here in the audience today in yellow are representing the Southwest Area Neighborhood Coalition, or SWAN for short. They've been in the game a very long time. These are our neighborhood and our community leaders in and around this area, and they've been very organized and committed to the work and advocating for their neighborhood. And frankly, I'm so happy to see them here, because I know that there was a level of discouragement, honestly, because they've been consistent in their needs and in, in their position on growth. As you all know, they live in close proximity, many of the neighborhoods, to the blue line, and so they understand that there's going to be some level of growth associated with that. However, neighborhood care, neighborhood preservation is important. These are homeowners, these are long-term renters and residents that care and are invested in their neighborhoods, and they're seeing not only an increase in traffic, but also an increase in code enforcement issues, an increase in crime in their neighborhoods. And enough is enough, is the, is the message. They're not unreasonable. I've had the pleasure of working with several of them for a long time. They, they want to invest in Charlotte, they want to be a part of the growth, they want to make sure that we're growing responsibly. And as the commissioner said, when, when we need to say no, that we do say no. And so I appreciate you coming out tonight. Not that it needs to be said, but I will say, obviously, I support you in this endeavor and will not be supporting this particular petition unless and until you all are aligned to the changes that are made. And I would encourage my colleagues to do the same in light of what we've heard tonight and in light of the broader conversation around policy. We know that we're going to grow by right in a lot of instances, but our role is to make sure that we're growing responsibly and that in as much as we can make the right decisions in our infrastructure to do so, that we can do it in a way that everybody benefits. So thank you once again for coming out, and stay tuned. As Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, this conversation is a follow-up to the work that Councilmember Johnson and Bakari led. It's going to continue next week, so tune in. And also, just want to add my support to the investigation in regards to the bridge. So definitely would like to see a report out on that current status. Thank you.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion of that motion? If you're none, all in favor closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. Any opposed, see none, that is closed unanimously. Thank you all very much for coming. We'll move on to agenda item number 48, rezoning petition 2022-177 by Appaloosa Real Estate Partners, located on approximately 15.52 acres at the southeast section of Mallard Creek Road and Galloway Road, west of Lexington Approach Drive in Council District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is UR2, urban residential conditional. Staff does not recommend approval of this petition in its current form. There is also ample community opposition to this petition tonight. So after staff's presentation, Ms. Grant, you'll have 10 minutes.
All right, thank you. 2022-177 is 15 and 1/2 acres located at Galloway Road and Mallard Creek Road, just south of Lexington Approach Drive. It is currently zoned R3, and the proposed zoning is for UR2 conditional. Adopted place type is Neighborhood One. You can see some commercial and some Small Neighborhood Two areas just to the south there off Galloway. The proposal itself is up to 186 for-sale townhome-style units, limits building height to 40 feet, provides an eight-foot planting strip and 12-foot multi-use path along Mallard Creek Road, and then eight-foot planting strip and eight-foot sidewalk along Galloway. Would also provide an ADA-compliant bus path along Mallard Creek Road, provides access to the site from both Mallard Creek Road and Galloway Road, and then also commits to a 30-foot setback from the future back of curb along Mallard Creek and Galloway as well. Provides usable common open space throughout the site, does provide walkways to connect entrances to sidewalks along public and private streets, and also provides architectural standards, including building materials. As mentioned, staff does not recommend approval of this petition in its current form. It is inconsistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation for Neighborhood One. I feel that the proposed form could be modified to some degree, potentially a reduction of some units, also provide some different configuration potentially for the internal street network. So we'll continue to work with the petitioner and the community on this one as it continues through the process, but that is our current recommendation, and we will take any questions that you may have following the petitioner's presentation and presentation from the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grant. I'll let you split up the time. You have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, members of the zoning committee. Bridget Grant, land use consultant with Morin Van Allen, pleased to be here tonight on behalf of our petitioner, Appaloosa, and their partner, Stanley Martin Homes. We're also being assisted by DRG on the design aspects. It's important to note Josh has over 10 years of experience in commercial real estate, developing over 3,000 residential uses under different entities, and he successfully rezoned multiple sites to residential in Charlotte again under different entities. When we changed the product to a for-sale product, Josh brought Stanley Martin on as the project partner. It's important to note Stanley Martin was named the 2021 National Builder of the Year and is known for developing quality communities throughout the southeast. As we take a look at our site, it's 15.52 acres located on the west side of Mallard Creek. You'll see there are a number of multifamily, retail, office, and commercial uses within a very short distance of our site, heading south towards Prosperity Church Road and within a half a mile of the Research Park. Again, when you zoom out a little further, you'll see that this area is not primarily single-family residential, but there's a good bit of those uses that we view as beneficial when looking for development opportunities. While the site is just shy of a half a mile north of Mallard Creek Road, petition 2022-087 approved earlier this evening is located a half-mile south and was approved for a very similar density, the same that we're seeking on this particular site. This area is not solely zoned R3. As you would expect to see within half a mile of Research Park and along the thoroughfare, there's a broad range of residential or non-residential and other higher-intensity zoning designations. You can see R17, R12, and a lot of B1 and other office zoning in the area. We are pleased to say the site is located on a bus route and will be adding a bus stop. The development of the site is also adjacent to sites that will extend the bike routes along this corridor. Mallard Creek Road widening is funded and set to begin right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation in 2025 to take it to a four-lane road. It will also take it from Mallard Creek Church Road all the way up to Breeze Wood. Again, the right-of-way acquisition starts in 2025. Again, the right-of-way acquisition starts in 2025 with construction in 2027. I'd like to take a little bit of time to discuss the place types in this area. The site is identified as N1 with a 2040 comp plan adoption and mapping. The recommended land use for N1 is circled on the map below. It's primarily single-family detached duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, attached single-family, and small multifamily buildings. Under the building form category in the fourth column, it reflects that townhomes can have five to, five units or fewer. This is taken directly from the 2040 comp plan. There's also a graphic that was provided in the policy guide map. The guide's intended to show you single-family townhomes with up to five uses or five units as an aspirational image of how N1 areas can develop. So, it just shows you to reflect how we can use townhomes and quadruplexes to transition into single-family areas. N1 place type is not reliant on alignment with underlying zoning standards or zoning standards in general. N1 is a policy, and the policy supports this form of development, as I read on the previous slide. That said, we recognize it's really important to take into consideration how we make these transitions to the existing single-family neighborhoods. This slide shows a comparison of where we started and where we're currently at. We originally submitted a plan for 186 units for rent. You can see the blue arrow showing where we had a potential road extending up to Lexington Approach. After a few meetings and discussions with the community, we made a significant change to adjust all the units from a for-rent to a for-sale product. Y'all know that's not something we see every day. We did it because there was a request for us to look at opportunities for upward mobility. We eliminated the streets connection, increased the open space, we reduced the number of units in each building. We also committed to brick facades on the residential units because that's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. We agreed to fence along the periphery's edge and provide an amenity area. When you look at the site, you'll see that we've got the 12-foot multi-use path along, up to Lexington Approach. We're providing a right-hand turn lane into our site. Our access points are limited to Mallard Creek and Galloway with an eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip along Galloway. We've tried to put the preservation of our sensitive areas and all of our open space closest to the existing single-family areas, and we've provided visitor parking at the amenity area as long, as well as on all of our public streets. We've got up to about 61 visitor parking spaces as part of this development. This graphic reflects a range of distances from the proposed units to the property line. You can see we range anywhere from 50 feet up to 279 feet away from the existing family homes. There is a pinch point on the northern side, but there's some buffer space between Lexington Approach and, on the property line, excuse me. These cross-sections are another graphic that show you how far away the proposed units are from the property line, just to give you an idea of how important it was for us to add that open space to the periphery of our site. So, what's the rationale for supporting this type of development in this location? We believe that this is, that townhomes are consistent form with the N1 place type. We're providing higher level of design standards and architectural commitments. We're committing to the brick facades, providing an appropriate transition. We're on a bus route, and that's historically been viewed as favorable. We are not including any of the connections to the existing neighborhood. We have close proximity to office and jobs. The 12-foot multi-use path and NC DOT road widening plans are actually funded. We believe this change to 186 for-sale is very positive. It's important for us to note that the UDO is expected to go online with an effective date in June. So, I want to take a moment to just look at how the new buy-right option under R, under N1A translates. R3 translates to N1A and may support an approximately 7.5 DUA. That's about 116 units on the site by right. With that buy-right development, there would be no commitment to a for-sale product, no architectural commitments or commitments for amenities, no commitments to increased buffers or open space, and no commitments to provide a buffer along, an offense along the property line. With conditional zoning, we aren't dismissing that we're seeking additional density. With a request for density, we're using conditional zoning to provide some guarantees and certainty in exchange for that density. And with that, again, the 186 units for sale. This table is just another way for you to look at it side-by-side when you look at maximum number of units and the benefits of the conditional zoning. The reason there's two numbers under N1A by right, someone had mentioned to me, staff mentioned that you could get up to 135 to 140 units under N1A. That's basically using just straight math multipliers. We took into consideration the new UDO standards, tree save, and other configuration requirements in site design standards, so we're a little more conservative and believe under a buy-right scenario, you wouldn't get more than 116 to 120 units. Again, the table is just another way to look at what we're trying to offer with the conditional zoning versus the buy-right zoning. Staff has acknowledged that if council were to approve this plan, it would align with Goals 1, 2, 5, and 7. Goal 1 specifically recognizes the diversity of surrounding uses in the area, the commercial, the retail, office, and jobs. We're committing to a variety of housing types specifically for sale and all the other benefits associated with this conditional zoning. We've been asked several times, can we reduce the density? We simply can't. Every month, we hear council ask development teams to change their development from a for-rent product to a for-sale product, and it rarely happens. We simply can't keep this as a for-sale product with all of the commitments and reduce the density. In order for us to make a meaningful reduction in density, to potentially drop 30 units off of what we're proposing and revise it to a two-story product with brick accents, we would have to transition back to a for-rent product, and it would likely be better aligned with potential for support from staff. We are all faced with a very new balancing act as we consider choices between the new UDO and what we're seeking when we ask for density and homeownership, and hoping that maybe there's something in between. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions after the community gives their presentation.
Thank you very much. I think I counted 23 speakers against, so you would get a total of 10 minutes combined. I would ask that you be kind to the people that also joined you to speak. So, if you come down, get to the podium, please identify yourself because we can also only recognize people that have already signed up to speak.
You might want to call their names. And again, if you do have comments that are written down, you can provide them to the clerk, and they will be distributed to the council and made part of the record. I can call up the names of everybody just to let you know that if you've signed up. Mohammed Banawan, Sandra Decker, Abdul Parker, Johnny Lowe, Jordan Boyd, Stanley Watkins, Nealon Lewis, David Hoffman, Tim Burgess, Mary Cotman, Clifford McLean, Maurice Cotman, Sharif El Kholy, Marwa Ismail, Mona Banawan, El Hajj, Mohammed Mahmoud, Patricia Malone, Jeannie Jenkins, Richard Jenkins, Tony Harris, James Hughes, Vincent Tron, Karen Dixon, and Janice Fiorio. You each have four seconds.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Pro Tem Winston to the hardest-working city council member in District Four, our city council member Renee Johnson. My name is Jordan Boyd. I'm a resident of the Lexington community and was asked to speak on behalf of this petition by my neighbors and residents for which I am grateful and humbled to do so. I'm also a pastor in the community, but tonight I stand as a resident in the largest precinct in the city, in the county, and in the state. That's precinct 212. My wife and I are 22-year residents in the community, and we stand tonight with all of those who are standing here before you, along with the residents of Arbor Hills, Fountain Grove, and Chadwick, to adamantly oppose this petition in any form, and we're asking you to do the same. Staff has already weighed in as to the reasons as to why they oppose it. We're asking you to stand with us and our council member representative in opposing this petition. It was said by Representative Johnson earlier in asking a question regarding the text amendment to the 2040 plan, and I think I heard the planning director say that this is not to me, meant to be a change in direction. We're asking you to change directions because you have failed to make known to the citizens of this city and the county what is clear to us in this negotiation with this developer. Come June 1, under the buy-right policy, as stated by the developer tonight, you have given them free rein under a very narrow scope to build as they want, how they want. No longer will citizens be allowed to come in this platform and say to you under a conditional policy, zoning policy, what can and cannot will be. I heard Councilmember Swatton talk about responsible growth. We are, we understand growth. We understand the need to address growth. We under, also understand what our council member representative has talked about, and that is responsible growth. Buy-right policy is not responsible growth. It gives the developers unchecked ability to come in without the residents having a say in what they put on the, on the site, on the site. As was said to us by the developer, if we don't approve and don't stand with them in their asking for the 186 units, they'll wait to June 1 and come back and put in what they want to under buy-right because buy-right gives them that authority. And you gave them that authority. We're asking you to take that back because you have taken our voice away. That means they can now... I'm going to use the slide that the developer gave tonight. No commitments to a for-sale product, no architectural commitments, no commitments for amenities, no commitments for increased buffers and open space areas, no commitments to provide a fence along the property line because under buy-right, they can do whatever they want to do, and you gave it to them. But we found out tonight, you can take it back because it hasn't happened in June 1 yet, and so you can change directions. And so, we're asking you to change directions. Thank you very much.
Honorable City Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, citizens, and distinguished guests. My name is Nealon Lewis, and I'm the president for the proud Lexington Association, the Community Association, HOA. We're a single-family development of 266 homes. That's a lot of voters. My neighborhood falls in District Four under the very capable leadership of Councilwoman I'm here with my neighbors today to stand in opposition to the rezoning petition number 2022-177 by Appaloosa Real Estate Partners. Appaloosa's developer representatives advise us that they envision charging a market rate of $400,000 per unit, albeit they're wanting to squeeze some 186 units into a meager 15.22 acres of land. Let me add that much of which is inhabited by docile deer, whitetail rabbits, a host of other harmless wildlife. This is disturbing and reckless. I want to pause and acknowledge again, Councilmember Johnson, for her consistent and compelling support for my neighborhood. She said once, inconsistent and irresponsible growth is not necessary, and that's what we see happening here, inconsistent and irresponsible growth. With the passage of this petition, we foresee further congested traffic on our roads, and we had two accidents, fatal accidents, in the last two years. Is that going to increase? Rats and vermin drawn by the stench of dumpsters added to next to our homes. If you look at that map, on the corner of it, it's five feet, five feet from the backyard of one of my neighbors. I ask you, would you want that up to your backyard? Overcrowded local schools compromising teacher-instusion racials, increased crime challenging an already stressed police fire and EMT support. Simply put, it's inconsistent, as you said, and we appreciate that. It's inconsistent with Lexington neighborhood and the surrounding single-family neighborhoods. It's inconsistent with the new 2040 plan that we've been talking about. And our quality of life makes sense. Quality of life makes sense. It's not just about the money. It can't be just about the money. $75 million, that's what you stand to make? Well, what about the quality of life that we stand to lose? Thank you for your time.
I think my neighbors have, have covered most of the key points, but I do want to, again, thank Councilmember Johnson for your support of all of our neighbors that are represented here today. This really is, you know, impacting us in such a negative way, and my home, our home, actually backed right up to the property line. So, the five feet away, I'm about 10 feet away from this property.
It's too close.
And it's way too close, and...
Too close. Too close.
We love, you know, there's a lot of old tree growth there. We love hearing all the animals at night, every night, the frogs. They would overwhelm you. It's just amazing, and this is just going to destroy all of that. And I know the city has a goal to get back to 50% tree canopy. A lot of old growth on this lot, on these three lots, and it's going to, you know, take away most of that, and the developer's only committed to keep 15%. So, you know, it's not going to help us get, get there, get to where the city council wants to get on that. There are also several townhome developments. There were some mentioned earlier that are within a mile of this development that are the Glenmere at Mallard Creek and Ari at the park that have around, you know, four to eight units per acre in density versus the 12 that's being proposed. The density is, is way too much. It's just going to cause all the problems that my neighbors have already expressed. So, as one of the members said earlier, let's try to do the development the right way and make the right decision about this and oppose this petition. Thank you.
Again, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Braxton, as well as the rest of the council. They're here before us today. I think, I got, Councilmember Johnson kind of called me out a little while ago and said, yeah, I'm a former city employee.
That's right.
I spent 22 years in the planning department from zoning to long-range planning, and I spent another 12 years running the Housing and Community Development Department. So, this is where I am. So, thank you. You know, I, like many of the folks that you see here, I'm kind of, you know, I've not been there as long as some of these folks have been here. My wife and I have been in the Lexington community about 23 years, but, you know, I got some friends up here pushing 30 or more in terms of being here. We're out of time.
Sorry. The last of speakers, can you identify your names, please, for the record?
Stanley Watkins.
You, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Richard Jenkins.
Thank you.
Nealon Lewis.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you. Ms. Grant, you have two minutes.
I have a question for Stan.
I have a question for Stan.
Richard Jenkins.
Stanley.
Can we go to the next person?
Thank you.
So, we know that the commi, the community is being faced with a choice, and in this case, there's something that we're looking at, the new UDO. We've moved past R3 and the idea that this is going to be 45 single-family homes. And so, our attempt was to be very transparent in what some of the options would be if this was in fact voted down. It was nothing other than to look at the options and to look at the choices. And if staff could pull my presentation back up, you'll see I showed those cross-sections and the distances specifically to show that the distances are 50 feet to 279 feet. I'm not sure where we're 50 feet from some, or five feet from someone's backyard. You can see these are the cross-sections that we provided, and I'm happy to answer any question. It's been a long night.
Yeah, we, we live there.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Winston. This is a significant increase in density. So, question for staff, Mr. Petten. With approval of this petition, would that revise the recommended place type from Neighborhood One? 1?
It would, yes. Yeah. It would recommend, or it would, excuse me, change the place type from Neighborhood 1 to Neighborhood 2.
Yeah, so this is inconsistent with what we have approved with our 2040 policy map, as well as with the UDO. And I know I have some friends who live in this community. I've been over to your homes, and this truly lacks the sensitivity to the surrounding neighborhood of single-family homes. And it, it just lacks the needed infrastructure I was looking at, and I will be supporting the district council member to oppose this rezoning petition in its current form. I think we really need to address the density here. We got to address the quality of life concerns, and if you look at the trips here, we are talking about more than triple what would be currently allowed. And that's significant. So, I would not want that in my neighborhood, and I share the concerns that's been raised by these neighbors, and I hope that petitioner will work with them to address and where we can come to some sort of resolution here. I don't think any of them are saying no to development, they just don't want neighborhood that's just completely lacks sensitivity to their homes. So, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. Mr. Watkins, please. Stanley. Stanley, you have built so many neighborhoods in our great city, so we appreciate you for your service. Can you give us your viewpoint on this rezoning and impact it, it will have on your community?
Yeah, in terms of what's, what's being rezoned in the packet that they're recommending, you know, in terms of 186 townhouse units on 15 acres, it is 12, but you have to realize currently now there's three units per acre until the new ordinance come in. But, and perhaps I can get staff to clarify for me, when I look at the conversion from R3 to N1A, that's when your conversion chart in terms of UDO. Now, if you look at the H1A, it does permit three type, a single-family duplexes and triplexes by right. Under prescribed conditions, you can do a quadruplex. But, N1, MA1 does not permit townhouses. Staff can correct me without my own. That's correct.
You're correct.
Townhouses is not permitted by right. I think that's a very, very important point. I think that y'all need to understand. And I think the other piece, as we look at it, we're going from three to 7.5, which I concur, under the rezoning, we go to 12 units per acre. And as we said before, we got property owners that are five feet away from either infrastructure or actual buildings into their backyard, as the other gentleman spoke. So, I think those are some things to keep in mind.
Thank you, Stanley. Glad to see you, sir.
I'll just, I'll make a broader comment because I think it's plain to me at the tactical level of this, you know, 7.5 versus 12 plus, there's a big difference there. And in order to get something like that based on the ink barely being dry on why we're here, there's gonna have to be significant concessions and, and a coming together of the neighborhood and the petitioner. And this month, I would encourage you all to do just that. But there, there's one thing I want to make real clear to everybody here, because it was in the first gentleman's comments, and that is the by right conversation. And I will tell you and everyone listening to this, we had almost two years of a contentious, knock-down, drag-out fight that was, that barely passed here, that a lot of us fought against, and we pleaded with the community to wake up and to pay attention to what was happening, and we couldn't get enough folks to come listen and to come and do this. And the thing I said back then is the thing I'll repeat now, people are gonna pay attention when they realize what people can build next to their houses. So that, my friends, was a fight in the inner nerdy city council stuff that no one cared about when it was theoretical, that now those chickens are coming home to roost, and those of us that gave everything we had for two years on this, you are now starting to see that play out. And that's unfortunate, but I want you to understand, this wasn't some little thing that we all said, okay, well, we'll get them, and they're not paying attention. That was a fight for two years. And, and I, I've heard your point, but I just want you to know that we didn't get the backing we needed to be able to win that battle, and now we're through that. So by right is by right. And at the end of the day, when this petitioner comes through, just know that, that the time for that battle has come and gone now. So I hope you understand, you have the next month to hopefully negotiate, but the fact of the matter is by right's by right.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I have so much to say. First, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the Lexington residents and the, the other communities that have come out, the residents of District 4. Commissioner, you may have the most powerful district, but I have the best, okay? Thank you. I want to say to Councilmember Rakari, I don't think it's that the residents didn't care. There were engaged residents. There was a machine, as we know, to have the UDO approved. So even though we fought, you know, tooth and nail, some of us, there was narratives, there, this was, that this was approved. So, we did hear tonight that there might be an opportunity to undo that. That's something that this council, if they have the political will, can certainly talk about. But as far as this petition, Liz, if you can post that map, this is a map that I've asked to be displayed since January at council meetings, and it's a map of the Mallard Creek area. It's the, it's a map of the pending, approved, and by right development. And I'm hoping that it's gonna be put up there in just a second, but what you're seeing to my colleagues, this is the effect. The residents who are speaking out against all of this development, they're not making this up, they're not being, this is not NIMBYism. There is an unbalanced and irresponsible growth. We don't have the infrastructure, it's a two-lane highway. We know that there, just down Mallard Creek, there's, is it a million square footage of development that's going, that's pending? So, I, I'm asking you to listen to the residents. This, this is non-characteristic of this, this area. Obviously, I'm going to be supporting it. We talk about the by right. If this is not approved, I, I've talked to the petitioner myself, and if it's not approved, there's 116 possibly rental, possibly vinyl units that are going to be built, and that's not fair to the residents. And, and we know that prior to the UDO, or 2040 approval, this petitioner would, would have withdrawn this petition because of the choices that they had. So I am asking you to support these residents. This is, it, the, the density, it's too much. City staff doesn't approve it, and it, it's just, it will affect the quality of life. This is not something that's appropriate for this area. If you look at this map, you see all of this, that there's, they're right on top of one another. They're right, you, I don't know if you can see it, I'm happy to email a, a copy, I might have emailed a copy to several of you, but these developments are right on top of each other on a two-lane highway. The infrastructure, we're still wa, we, we don't know if the infrastructure, the sewer, the storm, the pipes can hold this, the traffic, the, the sidewalks, we know the schools are overcrowded, we learned last month, we're not even counting the impact on schools. So, I agree with you, Council Commissioner, that there, you know, I always say moratorium is the M-word. I always call it that because that's something this council, I, I don't know if there's political will, and I'm not saying moratorium, I'm saying responsible growth. There are areas, based on the outcome of the infrastructure meeting, that we should take a look and when, and ask the question, when is it too much? So that's the broad picture. But for this petition, obviously, I'm going to be supporting you, take a look at this. I've also talked to the residents of District 4, we're, and we're talking about a coalition. We need a coalition, we'll, we'll have more engagement about that, but your voice is important. And I'm responsible to you, along with the at-large representatives as well. So I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate precinct 212, the, the largest precinct in the state. And it's our, it's my duty and my honor to serve you. So, with that, motion to close.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp, may, may I just, just, may I?
You have to be asked a question, this is the rules, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I withdraw my motion? I do have a.
Motion made in seconds, discussion of the motion.
You can withdraw your motion, that's an order.
You have discussion of the motion that was made.
Okay. Um, I wanted to ask.
Ms. Johnson.
Okay, I wanted to ask Pastor Boyd a question.
So, thank you, Council.
Let me ask you the question.
What's the question?
Do you have, is, is there anything else you, like?
Yes, I would. So, I, I'm asking for clarity.
Okay.
For our sake and all of the citizens of Mecklenburg County, are you saying that there is no possibility of changing the by right policy? That takes away the voice of the citizens. It's one thing to talk theoretically about a policy that has not been applicably applied. Now the residents are going to see, so that means next door to your house, in your community, the same developer can walk in and within a very narrow scope, using by right, put whatever they want in. Now, to say it's gone, it's a foregone conclusion, that's not true. Because it can be added back to the agenda.
So, so every piece of land has a zoning district. Every piece, every piece of land that has a zoning district has allowable uses that you can do by right. So that already exists, it always has existed, and will always, it always will exist. As that map was up there right now, you saw several stars. All that means is if the development, if the developer comes in and it fits all the standards of the policy in place, they don't have to come before council. So, in the grand scheme of things, when, when, if, out of 100 developments, only about 7% of developments go through a conditional rezoning process. Nine, over nine out of 10 developments that you see happening are happening by right. They always have, and they always will. Now, what is, what is allowed in those, those individual zoning districts, those are works of policy that city council can change over time to change what is allowable by right. So, it has, it, it's not something new, it's not something that, that goes away, but it's just, it's just something that, that is and always, always has been, always will be. Those are the rights of the property owner. Just like you have a home, you are allowed to do certain things on that, on that property, and there are certain things that you are not allowed to, but you can go through a conditional rezoning process to see if you can become allowed, and that's the difference between by right and conditional.
But, but what has changed is the allowances in those zoning types. Prior to the UDO, there were areas that were zoned strictly residential or strictly for single-family, and that's what's changed. And so prior to this, this passage, this area, if this wasn't passed, the developer would, would have only been able to build 45 single-family units because of the three units per acre. Now that we pass the UDO, developers can build duplexes and triplexes on any lot that would allow a single-family. You know, you know, the setbacks are important, and if there's an HOA and all of that, but, you know, if you're comparing equally, they are able to build duplexes and triplexes anywhere that a single-family home could be built. And that's the provision 2.1 that those of us who were opposed to the UDO fought against. So you're right, there's, but yes, there's by right, there's always been by right, but it's what's allowed now by right that wasn't allowed before. So your question seems like, is that, are we able to take a look at that policy and make changes to that? Well, I asked the question tonight, and it sounded like we were. So, based on the answer.
Ms. Wadlington?
Thank you. I just want to allow by right through the zoning and the place type map. That's not something that happens. So I want to make sure that you're clear, that you are talking to the right people. It is not something that, it happened and there's nothing that we can do about it. This, this council has the authority to defer the effective date of the implementation of the policy. So, continue to show up. That is something I'll say right now, I'm happy to support for the simple fact that as we work things out, there are things we learn along the way that we can go, that we can improve upon as we implement, implement this policy. There are options, so I don't want you to walk away from here thinking that because it was decided by our past council, that there's nothing that, that we can do. We absolutely can.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. May you oppose unanimously closed. Thank you all for coming out.
Mayor Pro Temp. I'd like to also recognize Susan Gann from CMS, one of our great administrators at the top of that program, is with us tonight. Thank you.
I shout out my friends.
Yeah, exactly.
Her career, her pathway, she's a real scientist.
She's fun to my email, you and Brett. She sent y'all an email, you and Brett, about scholarships and your programs. I never saw anything.
I didn't see any.
Yeah, me either. I didn't either.
I think I might have responded, though. Was your name Victoria?
What do you name?
Ms. Johnson. Oh, I had two. Ms. Johnson.
Now, this is more like the room we pass the other stuff in for two years. Dave, your face, priceless.
I just work.
We'll move on to agenda item number 49, rezoning petition 2022-175 by Rocky River Holdings LLC, located on approximately 38.25 acres along the north side of Rocky River Road, west of Black Creek Church Road, and southeast of John Russell Road in the ETJ in County Commission District 3, Mr. Dunlap's district, closest to City Council District 4, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is R3 single-family, single-family residential, and the proposed zoning is R8 MF multifamily residential conditional. Staff recommends approval of this petition. There is a speaker against this, so after Mr. Petten's presentation, Mr. Brown, you'll have 10 minutes.
All right, thank you. 2022-175, 38.25 acres on Rocky River Road, just to the west of Black Creek Church Road, it's currently zoned R3. You can see some R8 MF just next door as well, Neighborhood Services just across the street, as well as just to the west on Rocky River Road. Currently, the place type calls for Neighborhood 1. You can see Neighborhood Center just to the south across the street here from this petition. Proposal is for up to 200 and single-family attached residential units, just if we're continuing to do some math on these, this is about five, five acres, or five units to the acre. Accesses from Rocky River Road and future Eastern Circumferential Road would provide an eight-foot planting strip and 12-foot multi-use path along the site's frontage on Rocky River, construct bicycle facilities by locating curb and gutter 30 feet from Rocky River Road's center line and installing that 12-foot multi-use path. Also proposes an eternal network of public streets with six-foot sidewalks and eight-foot planting strips. New turn lanes will be provided per NC DOT at intersections on Rocky River Road. Architectural standards have been worked into the petition, maximum would be four units per building. Also, a four-foot berm along Rocky River Road would be in place along that frontage, you can see that with that green solid line around the, the road frontage on Rocky River. A quarter acre of improved open space areas, along with the dedication of one and a half acres to Mecklenburg County for the purpose of a public park. Buffers have been provided to existing multifamily residential and a 50-foot Class C buffer adjacent to that single-family piece there in the middle, and also illustrates some possible internal walking trails for the site. As mentioned, staff does recommend approval of the petition. There are some outstanding issues to continue to work through, it is inconsistent with the policy map, or we felt like the triplexes. It is inconsistent with the policy map, or we felt like the triplexes, excuse me, and quadruplexes that are being proposed, as well as the lighter density and the adjacent town home community that was approved under the same zoning district did provide us a little bit of additional context to provide some support for this petition. But we'll be happy to take any questions following all the presentations by both parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colin Brown, you have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers and any committee members. Crowd thin down on both sides. But thank you for cheering us out tonight here on behalf of Rocky River Holdings LLC. And there's our slides. One, I like, we've had a couple pretty heated discussions. So we are here with the townhome project, but I'd like to draw some distinctions between some of the petitions we've heard and this one. So as you can see, here we are out Rocky River Road. Our site is here with a star on it. One of the things you'll notice is that we have no single-family neighbors. There is a development site here by Madamy Homes that is under development for townhomes. But again, we've got, got no adjacencies to single-family homes. What is unique about this project, if you all have been out here, this where my cursor is, is the location of the Hodges Family Farm. The Hodges Family Farm has been in family-owned and operated for over 100 years. If you've been out there, they kind of, I've taken my kids out there for the pumpkin patch before. So it is a historically important part of the community. Again, so the Hodges Farm is across the street, but the property that we're talking about tonight is owned by the Hodges family. The farm here, like I said, is historic, it's over 100 years old, has a historic landmarks designation on it. And the family very much wants the Hodges Farm to continue in operation for maybe the next 100 years. So again, they have a, a family member who continues to operate the farm. It is an ongoing, but as you may know, farming is not a very lucrative business. And so the family needs income to support the farm so that the historic portion of the farm can continue to exist. And so that is the purpose. The Hodges family is selling off this acreage across from the farm to, yes, a developer so that those funds can be used to support the existing Hodges Farm. So I would say to you, the neighbor that's the, the most affected, and we've heard from neighbors tonight, are the Hodges family themselves. The owner of the farm here, and believe it or not, this, this piece of land here, which is kind of enveloped by our development, is owned by the member of the Hodges family. So the Hodges, it is very important to them that this be a quality development. And so we are doing, we're in a conditional zoning. As you know, the place type is Neighborhood One. So although Neighborhood One, you know, says that attached housing is appropriate, for some reason, we're not, some reason that I don't quite understand, we're, we're said, told that we're not consistent. But here is the site plan. We're using an R8 MF CD zoning. The proposal's for 200 townhomes, which is only about five units per acre. So 5.2 units per acre. We've been talking about some very, some much higher density stuff tonight. This is a fairly low density. We, we've talked a little bit about the UDO and what it might offer. My guess is that the, under the UDO, someone could develop more units than this. But it is important to the Hodges family. They, they'd also like to have a conditional plan on the site so that they know what's coming. So that they know what type of density is coming, they know what type of product is coming. They've got some commitments for buffers along the road. There's a commitment to an acre and a half park dedication. And so that's where we are with the petition. I, I do think there are some significant distinctions, again, between some of the petitions we've heard tonight, really being the low-density nature of this. There is a speaker in opposition. I, I've spoke to her briefly this morning, so I don't know what her concerns are. After the hearing, I'm happy to follow up. I, I do think that the proposal here is frankly better than, than a by-right development, either under our current ordinance or the new ordinance. We talk about transportation traffic impacts a lot. We talk about school impacts. If you notice the CMS statement, the townhomes versus single-family, their CMS is predicting this would generate fewer students than a by-right development. Traffic, we're a little bit above, but not a significant impact. So again, I think the benefits of this petition are to lock in a conditional plan, gives uncertainty to the, to the family that, that lives here around it, of the quality of the development, a low-density development, a dedication to Mecklenburg County Parks and Rec, and some other commitments to green spaces, and future dedications of right-of-way for CDOT and NC DOT plans. I know there's a speaker in opposition, so I will let them speak and then be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Patricia Campbell, you have 10 minutes.
The present R3, which they are trying, they were trying to go from a R3 to an R8. Then they later decided to go from a R8 to a R8 MF CD. This will place tri and quad units versus single-family units in the area. It will affect us in the following ways. One, the character of our neighborhood. Two, our neighborhood designation of N1 becomes an N2. Three, no reliable public transportation. Four, overwhelm our city roads and endanger cyclists and pedestrians with more vehicular traffic. And five, increase our carbon footprint. And this is not in accordance with the 2040 plan. Our area, Finko, is not on the list for better transportation within the next 20 years, and impact fees are nonexistent. We would like Rocky River Holdings LLC to meet with the residents to discuss the following community benefits for our area. Green spaces, connectivity to existing sidewalks, walking trails, and minority and women inclusion for the building process. We would also like to meet with the Transportation Department to hear their plan for the flood of commuters into an area that was, until recently, farmland and forest, but has become the new it for development. Presently, the Finko area and the 2040 plan are incohesive. We are, what are Rocky River Holdings LLC, Charlotte City Council, the zoning department, and CDOT doing to, to ensure our residents' concerns are being addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Again, and I'll be happy to, we, again, spoke this morning, so we've had each other's numbers. I'll be happy to follow up. Again, I, I think, once we review our conditional plan, I think we're frankly in a better place and happy to talk about those issues with the neighborhood. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashamara.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. So this is for Mr. Petten. I see this petition is inconsistent with the 2040 policy map. So I'm trying to understand the rationale here for recommendation. How is this different from the previous rezoning petition?
Certainly, yeah. I think the, the big difference for us primarily is context. You know, we're not having the same kind of general impact on some of the neighboring properties that we saw in that previous petition. We're in an area that has a little bit less of some of those concerns from traffic and transportation standpoint. And also, we've got a similar zoning district and development pattern right next door, which this petition will tie in and continue to establish the road network. We've got a dedication of a, a larger park space, development of a future road for that Eastern Circumferential Road that's going through the site. So I think there were a few differences, mainly the context was a little bit different for us. We're also at about 5.2 DUA versus the other one was about 12. So if we're looking at things from a Neighborhood One to Neighborhood Two scenario, this really comes in on the light end. In fact, it's, it's fairly close to consistent with Neighborhood One, just with the, the fact of some of those quad units wouldn't be necessarily consistent with that place type. But it's with just three and four-unit project, or three, three and four-unit groupings, we're getting a little bit closer to what, what some of those outcomes would be in Neighborhood One. So those were primarily the big differences for us. It was continuation of that existing development pattern next door and the road network, future build out of the, the new road network with Eastern Circumferential, dedication to park space, multi-use path, bike lane, some additional things that really went into this petition, as well as it just being a little bit lighter outcome in terms of total unit count across all those acres.
Got it. Thank you. And I appreciate the Hodges Farm here. We live very close to this site, and we've been there many times for the community events. So I don't have any additional questions. Move to close.
Second. It's been a motion made, a proper second to close the public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that's unanimous to close the public hearing. We will move on to Item Number 50, rezoning petition 2022-179 by Coral Reef Investment Properties LLC, located on approximately 5.65 acres along the east and west side of Charlotte Park Drive, south of Presley Road, and west of Interstate 77 in Council District Three, Ms. Watlington's district. Current zoning is B2 general business, and the proposed zoning is mud CD mixed-use development district conditional. Staff does not recommend approval of this petition in its current form. So after staff's presentation, the petitioner will have 10 minutes.
All right, thank you. 2022-179, 5.65 acres off Presley Road, just to the west of South Triumph Street and I-77. Currently, it's zoned B2, and it is being proposed for mud conditional. You've got two pieces there on Pioneer Park and Charlotte Park Drive. The adopted place type on the left-hand side for where the proposed apartment building is being proposed is Neighborhood Two. The commercial portion is the other piece of this petition, which is really just being proposed to be preserved as open space. So the petition itself gets into a proposal for up to 210 multifamily units and then 4,000 square feet of retail EDE, general medical office uses, personal service uses that are allowed in mud. Does have use prohibitions on automotive service stations, repair facilities, shopping centers, et cetera. So some of those uses that are in mud that aren't really compatible have been prohibited. Does limit building height to 85 feet, provides a 16-foot setback along Presley Road, Charlotte Park Drive, Yorkwood, and Pioneer Park Drive. Also, that piece there, it's parcel 14528203, strictly would be allowed for open space only. Small area of that existing parking that's already there would remain, but again, that would be conditioned to just be open space. Access to the site is off Pioneer Park. It does commit to eight and eight sidewalk and planting strip along those street frontages, and then eight and six with eight-foot planting strip and six-foot sidewalk for the Charlotte Park Drive along that open space area. Does commit to architectural standards, and then does state that new lighting will be full cutoff and detached lighting will be limited to 20 feet in height. Staff's main concern with this petition is the building height. We're still working with the petitioner on that and just trying to understand a little bit better some context, particularly about what was approved behind. I believe that was approved for about 40 feet. This would essentially be a doubling of that. So we do have some concerns, but fairly confident we'll be able to work through those with the petitioner. So I just wanted to continue to have some of those conversations and felt it was more than just a resolution of that issue. We'd, we'd like to see a little bit of change on that. But again, we'll continue to have conversations with the petitioner and evaluate that as it progresses. So with that, we'll turn it over to the petitioner team, and we'll take any questions following the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colin Janest, Adrian Sokolowski, and Alberta Villa Cevallos. You got 10 minutes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, members of City Council. My name's Colin Janest, representing the petitioner tonight. We do have Adrian and Alberto, the petitioner, and the project architect, who I think are sitting up top, maybe behind me, who are happy to answer any questions at the end. Thanks to Mr. Petten for the, the detailed summary. I think he covered a lot of what I was here to discuss tonight, so I'll try to be brief. First, I just want to start by making sure I do not bury the lead, and that is that we are prepared to comply with all the outstanding issues related to the building height and some of the additional notes that staff has asked us to include. So I want to start there again and say that, that we are ready to move forward with those conditions. Beyond that, I just want to provide some context to the site in general. Again, Dave, I think described the general location, but this is just north of the Woodlawn-Billy Graham intersection, located off of Presley Road and Charlotte Park Drive. The main building site is actually going to be bounded by four, on four sides, by three existing roads and then one proposed road that's part of the, the Phase One construction. This site originally was permitted by right as a B1, and the, the image you see on the screen with the two U-shaped buildings are a portion of that Phase One development. As part of that original development, we also dedicated this open space on the right side that you're seeing now and is, is part of the current petition. This, the petition we're reviewing tonight came about, roughly about a year ago, when we reached out to staff to see if there'd be an opportunity to look at an increase in density beyond what the by-right use would allow. At that time, we were proposing 350 units, which we were made aware very quickly was not appropriate. And subsequently, we, we brought that down to the 210-unit number you see today. Additionally, we started with 120 feet of a maximum height, which, you know, for the mud district is the, I guess, maximum amount allowed. However, again, heard very quickly from staff that that was not appropriate, and we came back on the last revision proposing 85 feet. So I say all of that because, as I stated at the beginning, we are prepared to move forward with the 65-foot height. All of that being said, before I open things up for questions, I did want to note that prior to the meeting, petitioner, we all had a discussion, and, and I don't want to put Mr. Petten on the spot, but he has looked at the numbers, and from an affordability standpoint, the 210 units, this economic, we cannot make the numbers work with an affordable component. If council had an appetite or a willingness to look at an increased unit count by approximately 40 units, that would get us up to a total of 250, we do believe that we could have 30% of those additional units beyond the 210. So we're talking 12 units of the additional 40. We would be looking for to potentially be, be affordable in that 80 to 85% AMI range. I mention all of this because the cap, the capped height at 65 feet would be problematic in that sense. So in this case, if this is something that council and then working with staff is something that folks might be open to, we would need to look at an increase in height, likely to the 70, 75-foot range. So we're not asking, again, to even go back up to the 85 feet. So with that being said, just wanted to make sure you all had the, the full picture of what we're trying to accomplish here, and happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Ms. Watlington.
Thanks. I just had a question about the height piece, the, and it's really for staff. Sorry, Dave. So as it relates to, I know this is not TOD, but as it relates to the affordability bonus, how could that apply here?
So we did talk with the petitioner earlier on about TOD. It, I think it would meet some of the walk distance, but we had some concerns about the type of walk that that really is. It's not really the best walk to make. So that's when we set it on the mud district. You know, I think if there's a conversation about additional units that could be affordable, that's certainly always a conversation that we're willing to, you know, entertain and, and talk through. And if that means that, you know, we might have to be comfortable with a, a different building height, you know, certainly I think all conversations are open for consideration. And, you know, anytime we can try to incorporate affordability into a project, that's always a bonus. But, you know, I don't know, like necessarily is that, we, we, again, we don't predicate any recommendation based off of that, but we always encourage petitioners to include that. So if that's a conversation that they want to have, I think we're certainly willing to have that. And if that means, you know, maybe some of that give and take from staff's concern about the height to go with something that's affordable, I think, you know, we're willing to listen to that and, and have part of that conversation to see what that may look like. But we wouldn't predicate any recommendation on incorporation of that affordability. But again, it's always a, a good outcome and, and a bonus for a project when, when we see that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, I would be much more interested in increasing affordability via, and in increasing height, rather than adding 40 units and getting 12 back as affordable. So just my input.
Any other comments? Question?
Motion to close. Second.
Motion they made, probably second to close the public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move on to Item Number 51, rezoning petition 2022-181 by AJ Clank, located on approximately 0.22 acres on the south side of North Davidson Street, north of Yadkin Avenue, and west of East 34th Street in Council District One, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is TODM, transit-oriented development, mixed-use optional, and the proposed zoning is mud owed, mixed-use development district optional. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation in site and building design. There is no opposition to this. So after staff's presentation, the, the speaker will have three minutes.
All right, thank you. 2022-181. 2022-181, it's about .22 acres on North Davidson Street, just across from the Y. It is currently zoned TODMO. Proposed zoning is for mud optional. The policy map does recommend this block and area of North Davidson Street on this side as a neighborhood center. Since petition and request would be generally consistent with that, the proposal would allow all uses in mud, including an EDE with outdoor dining in an existing 1,533 square-foot residential structure built around 1,900. That would be adaptively reused and improved, and then existing just about over 1,000 square-foot greenhouse. You can see that in the back corner of the property. Three small maturing street trees will be provided on-site to satisfy the streetscape requirements, and then due to the site being located within a transit station area, tree save mitigation, payment and lieu options would be available under the city of Charlotte Tree Ordinance. Proposes the following optional provisions: Allow for three on-street parking spaces and one on-site vehicular pad to satisfy the required parking spaces. Again, we typically see these kinds of things on North Davidson Street and Central Avenue, so this is not an uncommon optional provision to request. They also would like the existing structure to encroach into the 14-foot setback along North Davidson Street, and also an optional provision to allow the existing four-foot planting strip and five-foot sidewalk to satisfy the required public sidewalk associated with the development. Typically, the streets map in this area by adopted would call for a wider sidewalk and planting strip. Believe one of the outstanding issues we have, we'll get to our recommendation, which is recommend approval upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and site and building design. One of those transportation items that we're continuing to work through is taking that four-foot planting strip and removing that and increasing the sidewalk width to nine feet total. So curb line wouldn't change, building location wouldn't change, it would essentially add five feet of paved area to make that space in front of the site nine feet in width. Again, that's a request of the petitioner. They have an optional provision to just leave it as is, but that's an outstanding issue that we're still trying to work through and get some consistency on. I do understand the neighborhood would like to see it remain as is, but that's the request that's outstanding on that transportation side. It is consistent with the policy map recommendation. Again, staff does recommend approval, and we'll take any questions following the petitioner's presentation on this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chip Cannon and Sean Potter, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I'm Chip Cannon. On behalf of the petitioner and Goodyear House, we're just available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Petten, questions for you? Since this is a residential structure that was built in 1,900, do we have any specific design requirements of what can and cannot be done with this structure?
I don't believe there's, it's not in any historic district, so there wouldn't be any historic district, you know, review for this one. So the adaptive reuse would just go through standard building code review for internal upfits. If they decided to remove the structure, then they would need to comply with all the mud standards for a new structure. So it either stays as is and gets outfitted from the inside, or they would redo the structure at some point down the road, and that would have to meet all mud requirements.
And as this is just for including outdoor dining, it does not include any type of, and I guess this will be a question for you, it doesn't include any out, any entertainment, just potential dining?
Just what's generally allowed by the EDE. We are going to put some notes in limiting the hours of any kind of outdoor activities, which is standard in the.
So there may be outdoor activities, but under the EDE, you would just fall under our current restrictions.
Correct. Yeah. And will likely be similar also to what's just going on next door at Goodyear House, and we've seen a couple of those, and we'd look to get some of those same conditions worked in.
Ms. Anderson.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was reviewing the notes, and I see that you really only had two community members attend the meeting.
Correct. We did have two meetings where we were, where we participated with the NODA Neighborhood Business Association. Both of those meetings were very well represented. And then we did host our own community meeting on-site, and we did have only two people show up, but we did have very good representation at the other two meetings.
Okay, great. I did receive a letter of recommendation from the NODA Neighborhood Association for this project, so they are aligned with what the intended uses are.
Correct. I think they were very excited to be getting rid of the approved site plan that called for a parking lot back here, to be able to keep the, what we're doing back there now, which is outdoor dining with a huge, beautiful cedar door, cedar.
Yes. Great. Motion to close?
Second.
Motion made, probably second to close a public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. Seeing none, that motion is approved to close the public hearing. We'll move on to agenda item number 52, rezoning petition 2022-184 by United Air Filter Company, located on approximately 2.13 acres on the east side of West Palmer Street, south of West Morehead Street, and north of the John Belk Freeway in Council District 2, Mr. Graham's district, is going to close the donut hole over there at the Pipe and Foundry. The current zoning is I-2 general industrial, proposed zoning is U-mud uptown mixed-use district. Staff recommends approval of this petition. There are no speakers in opposition, so after staff's presentation, Mr. Carl Michael, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. This is 2.13 acres located on the east side of West Palmer Street, southwest of West Morehead Street, and north of the John Belk Freeway. Site is currently zoned I-2 general industrial, and the proposed zoning is U-mud uptown mixed-use district. The 2040 policy map recommends regional activity center for the site. Staff recommends approval of the petition. It is consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation for regional activity center. I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carl Michael, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council and the zoning committee. I'll be really brief. Mr. Cannon did a good job. Site's about 2 acres on West Palmer Street. It's surrounded by parcels that are zoned U-mud O, and it's consistent with the 2040 policy map that's caused for a regional activity center, not only on the site, but all the surrounding area. It's located within the 277 loop, but we're happy to answer, but the request is to go to U-mud to permit uses allowed in the U-mud zoning district on the site, and we're happy to answer any questions that we're able to.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the council?
Close.
Second. There's been a motion made, probably second to close a public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that vote is unanimous. We'll move on to item number 53, petition number 2022-185 by Morningstar Properties LLC located on approximately 6.01 acres on the south side of David Cox Road, east of Old Statesville Road, and north of West W.T. Harris Boulevard in Council District 2, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is I-1 light industrial, and the proposed zoning is I-2 general industrial. Staff recommends approval of this petition. There are no speakers again, so after staff's presentation, the petitioner will have three minutes.
Thank you. 6.01 acres on the south side of David Cox, east of Old Statesville Road, and north of West W.T. Harris Boulevard. Site is currently zoned I-1 light industrial, surrounded by I-1 uses, but they are proposing I-2, and there are also I-2 zoning in the area. It is consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation, which recommends manufacturing and logistics use. Staff recommends approval, and I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carl Michael, you have three minutes.
John covered it. We're happy to answer any questions. Catherine Henning with the petitioners with me as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the council?
Move to close.
Second. Been a motion made, probably second to close a public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That vote is unanimous in favor of closing the public hearing. We'll move on to item number 54, rezoning petition 2022-187 by Vista Residential Partners, located on approximately 14.8 acres on the west side of Creffill Drive, east of Monroe Road, and west of East Independence Boulevard in Council District 6, Mr. Bakari's district. Current zoning is R6 MF multifamily residential conditional, and the proposed zoning is R22 MF multifamily residential conditional. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to environment and requested technical revisions related to site and building design. There are no speakers against this, so after staff's presentation, the petitioner will have three minutes.
Okay, this is 14.8 acres on the west side of Creffill Drive and east of Monroe Road, west of, east of Independence Boulevard. It is adjacent to the McAlpine Creek Park and Greenway, which is the area you see on the screen, zoned R3. It is currently zoned R6 MF CD multifamily residential conditional. That's an old conditional zoning district, and it would allow essentially the same number of units as being proposed tonight, but due to changes to the stormwater ordinance and the tree ordinance over time, basically, the old conditional plan wasn't able to be built out as originally proposed, and so they are requesting a zoning change to R22 MF multifamily residential conditional. The site is recommended for neighborhood 2, so it's consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation, and you can see that there's other areas in the area also recommended for that neighborhood 2 place type, and they're also developed with multifamily residential. The proposal would allow up to 320 multifamily dwelling units, maximum building height of 65 feet, a 30-foot building and parking setback from the future right-of-way of Creffill Drive, minimum of 8,000 square feet of open space. It splits the site into two development areas, A and B, which are divided by a stream and potential tree save area, and connects those two development areas with at least one internal pedestrian connection. Illustrates an area to be dedicated to Mecklenburg County Park and Recreation. That's in the, basically, the northeast or northwest corner of the site, that little strip of land there. Shows proposed Greenway connector through the site from Creffill Drive to McAlpine Creek Greenway. Actually ties into the, there's a 5K cross-country course on the park site and, which also connects up to the Greenway, and so it would tie all that together and provide access to the Greenway. It provides a minimum of eight EV-ready parking spaces and two EVSE install parking spaces. Access would be via Creffill Drive, constructs an eight-foot planting strip and eight-foot sidewalk along Creffill Frontage, and provides architectural standards related to architectural building, exterior building materials, building modulation, and limits on blank walls and roof design. Staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of the outstanding issues related to environment and technical revisions related to site and building design. Like I said, it is consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation for neighborhood 2 place type, and I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Very much. You have three minutes. Mr. McVane.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Winston, members of council, members of zoning committee, Keith McVane with more than Alan, Assistant Vista Residential. With me tonight, representing the petitioner is Alex Barasso and Marcus Vidal. John did an excellent job running through the, through the, through the request. It is a site previously rezoned R22 for up to 320 units under the old R6 MF conditional plan. For the, for the reasons John stated, this plan cannot be implemented due to regulatory changes, and really, this plan with the topography and the stream in the middle is really not developable on this site. So consistent with the place type, this is our proposed site plan that, based on the technical data sheet that John showed you, building, two buildings on either side of the central green space. We are working, as John mentioned, dedicate some land, additional land to the McAlpine Green, Greenway or McAlpine Park, and we'll work with John and his staff to resolve the remaining issues. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bakari.
Is a, it's a, it's a large number of units, so I'm just kind of surprised, like nobody showed up to the community meeting.
It's in the area that's, if you look at the surrounding uses, additional multifamily communities, an existing car dealership, and then the county Greenway, it's just not an area where you normally would expect a lot of people to come to a community meeting.
You feel confident that the neighborhoods in any area, even tangentially there, have been notified or know something's happening?
I wouldn't. I mean, the notice only goes out a mile to neighborhoods, so I would imagine if you're a registered neighborhood within a mile, you're, you know about it, whether, you know, on, really, a site oriented to Independence, the neighborhoods are way on the other side of Monroe, or way to the northeast on Independence, it's hard to see how you would be affected by this site, which is already zoned for multifamily.
Let's just, little touch base in the, in the coming weeks before next month.
Sure, we'll be happy to do that.
Make sure we've got all our bases touched.
Sir.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Move to close.
Second. There's been a motion made, probably second to close a public hearing. All in favor of that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous to close the public hearing. And move on to item number 55, rezoning petition 2022-188 by North Bridge LLC on approximately 6.25 acres, located along the south and west side of Windsor Oak Court, west of England Street, and north of East Hebron Street in Council District 3, Ms. Watlington's district. Current zoning is BP Business Park, and the proposed zoning is I-2 general industrial. Staff recommends approval of this petition, so after staff's presentation, the petitioner has three minutes.
Okay, this is 6.25 acres on the south and west side of Windsor Oak Court, west of England Street, and north of East Hebron Street. It is currently zoned BP Business Park, along with a few other parcels in the area. However, they are requesting a rezoning to I-2 general industrial, and there's also industrial zoning in the area as well, and the, and the land uses in that, in that side of England Street are generally manufacturing and industrial uses. The 2040 policy map recognizes that and recommends manufacturing and logistics for the place type. Staff recommends approval of the petition. It's conventional, it's consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation for manufacturing and logistics, and I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you very much. Stephen McCarthy, you have three minutes.
I'm just here to answer any questions the council may have. Long story short, we've been very fortunate as a company. We're based in Charlotte. We have 250 employees. We would like to put a multimillion-dollar office building to better facilitate the people that we work with, and this zoning would give us that clarity right now with Business Park. We don't know what it's going to become in the future. We assume it's going to become this, but we've gone through this exercise to have some clarity because of the amount of money we do want to invest in this area.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council?
Move to close.
Second. Motion has been made, probably second to close a public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. That is unanimous vote to close the public hearing. And move on to item number 56, rezoning petition 2022-190 by Charlotte Pipe and Foundry Company, located on approximately 1.08 acres on the west side of Providence Road, north of Ardsley Road, and south of Moravian Lane in Council District 6, Mr. Bakari's district. Current zoning is URC, Urban Residential Commercial Conditional, and proposed zoning is URC CD SPA, Urban Residential Commercial Conditional with the site plan amendment. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design and transportation. There are no speakers against this, so after staff's presentation, Ms. Brown, you have three minutes.
All right, it's approximately 1.08 acres on the west side of Providence Road, north of Ardsley Road, and south of Moravian Lane. The current zoning is URC CD, Urban Residential Commercial Conditional, and the proposed zoning would be Urban Residential Commercial Conditional Site Plan Amendment. The 2040 policy map calls for neighborhood 2 for this parcel. The petition would allow up to 40,000 square feet of non-residential uses as permitted in the URC zoning district. It would prohibit car washes, self-storage facilities as a principal use, animal crematoriums, dry cleaning and laundry establishments, tattoo establishments, medical offices, and restaurant uses exceeding 5,000 square feet. Commits to a maximum building height of 50 feet and provides the following transportation provisions: Access via Providence Road. Commits to install an eight-foot planting strip and an eight-foot sidewalk along Providence. Petitioner would also contribute up to $7,500 to the city for upgrading pedestrian ramps. Petitioner would can, would upgrade the existing Katz Bus Stop at the northwest intersection of Ardsley Road, and Providence Road provides architectural standards related to the primary building materials, building massing height, architectural features along building elevations, minimum ground height of 12 feet, screening dumpster enclosures, and HVAC units. Commits to full cutoff lighting fixtures, maximum height of 21 feet for freestanding fixtures, and provides a six-foot opaque fence along the northern and western property boundaries. The staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site and building design and transportation. It is inconsistent with that 2040 policy map recommendation for the neighborhood 2 place type. However, the current entitlements for the site under petition 201008 would allow for adaptive reuse of the existing structure for non-residential uses. That 2011 plan would preclude the site from being fully redeveloped with new structures, and this site plan amendment would maintain the parcels permitted in non-residential uses, but allow for that redevelopment to, that better aligns with the current site and building design guidelines that we have in place going forward with the UDO. The existing conditional plan from The existing conditional plan from 2011, for example, would allow for parking areas between the building and Providence Road frontage, whereas the rezoning proposal would move that building footprint up closer to the frontage and relegating the parking to the rear and side of the site. And the adjacent R3 zone parcels would be adequately buffered with a 20-foot rear yard and opaque fence along the western boundary of the site, and opaque fence will be installed along the northern boundary, which abuts single-family uses in an R22 MF zoning district. The bank at the intersection of Providence, oh, and at the bank at the Providence and Moravian Lane. Although it's inconsistent with the policy map recommendation for Neighborhood 2, it is, it has been intended for non-residential uses for many years, and the rezoning would bring the parcel under Neighborhood Center, which matches the adjacent parcels that are along Providence Road, and this area of Providence Road corridor matches the goals of the Neighborhood Center place type, and the houses, and houses a number of commercial uses that service the nearby residents in the bordering Neighborhood 1 and Neighborhood 2 communities. The petition could facilitate goals 1, 1, 5, 6, and 8 of the comprehensive plan and recommending, or, and the approval of the petition would change the policy map from that Neighborhood 2 place type to Neighborhood Center. I'll take any questions after Mr. Brown's presentation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, zoning committee members. Colin Brown, on behalf of Charlotte Pipe and Foundry. Many of you will recall when we did the major rezoning for the Charlotte Pipe and Foundry Foundry Site on Moorhead outside of Uptown, some of you actually visited us on the site, and we may have stood in, or walked, walked in, or stood in front of the Product Knowledge Building, which is a building that Charlotte Pipe uses to bring pipe installers and users from all over the country to Charlotte to learn about the products they manufacture. They are being displaced from the foundry, and so they have an opportunity to relocate, and we're very pleased that they're staying in the city of Charlotte, and essentially taking the Mecklenburg Furniture Building in the Myers Park Eastover area, which has been vacant for about 15 years, and replacing it with kind of a dynamic new building, very low-intensity use. You'll see the community meeting only had two attendees, but there was early outreach to the community organizations. I think the neighborhoods are, I don't want to say excited about, but I think everyone's very comfortable with this type of use. It's very low intensity. Charlotte Pipe is known for high-quality buildings, so happy to be here with staff support and no opposition, happy to take questions.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Move to close.
Motion has been made, improperly second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Seeing none, it is unanimous to close the public hearing and move on to rezoning petition 2022, agenda item number 57, rezoning petition 2022-192 by Cent Real Estate Capital LLC on approximately two acres bound by the east side of Plymouth Avenue, on the south side of Dunlow Street, west side of Savania Avenue, and the north side of North Tryon Street, Council District 1, Ms. Anderson's district. The current zoning is I-2 General Industrial, and the proposed zoning is Mud CD, mixed-use development district conditional. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and site and building design. There is no opposition to this, so after staff's presentation, the petitioner will have three minutes.
Okay, that's two acres bound by the east side of Plymouth Avenue, south side of Dunlow Street, and west side of Savania Avenue, north side of North Tryon Street. The current zoning is I-2 General Industrial, proposed zoning is Mud CD, mixed-use development conditional. The 2040 policy map calls for a commercial place type for the site. The petition proposes up to 275 multifamily residential dwelling units, or an option for 85 single-family attached townhome dwelling units, a minimum of 3,000, and a maximum of 8,000 square feet of commercial space, minimum eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip on all street frontages, and provides a buffered bicycle lane along North Tryon Street and Dalton Avenue, street frontages. Vehicle access to the site is from Savania Avenue, as well as a shared access with the proposed adjacent multifamily development off of Dunlow Street. Provides architectural standards related to building materials, screening, solid waste facilities, ground floor entrances with connections to sidewalk, building massing and blank wall limitations, ground floor transparency requirements as well. Proposes a single-family attached townhome option and provides architectural standards for building orientation, roof pitches, limitations on visible garage doors, usable front porches and stoops, predominant entrances, building materials, and blank wall limitations. Maximum building height would be 80 feet and provides requirements for height transitions adjacent to the surrounding residential uses, and commits to site lighting standards such as full cutoff type decorative lights. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon the resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and site and building design. It is inconsistent with 2040 policy map recommendation for that commercial place type, but staff feels the petition is appropriate and compatible for the location as it increases the variety of housing types in the area while creating opportunities for neighborhood-scale commercial services that could help support the residents of the proposed development and the adjacent Lockwood neighborhood. Several parcels to the, near the site and along North Tryon Street corridor have recently been rezoned or are in the process of requesting rezoning to the Mud CD and Muddy districts, and this represents an ongoing shift in the area to a more urban mixed-use pattern. The petition commits to providing a minimum of 3,000 square feet and a maximum of 8,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, and personal care uses, proposes and includes architectural standards and limits the maximum building height to 80 feet. The site is served by number 11 and number 21 Katz Local Buses that provide service to the Charlotte Transit Center, IKEA Boulevard Point, University Point, and Sugar Creek Road, Harris Boulevard, WT Harris Boulevard, respectively. The site is located within a three-quarter mile walk of the Parkwood Links Blue Line Station, and petition, approval of the petition would change the policy map from commercial to community activity centers for the play, for the site. I'll take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Colin Brown, again, on behalf of the petitioner, Cent Real Estate Capital, to talk to you about this project. John has done a great overview, so I'll just go very briefly, but as you can see, very much the edge of Uptown, so Uptown here, 277 Intermodal Facility, Lockwood neighborhood. What's going on the site now is not a lot of great uses, kind of outdoor storage, truck parking, a lot of things that are currently allowed in the industrial zoning district that'd be allowed if this translates under the UDO. This would become manufacturing and logistics, which would allow those types of outdoor storage and things like that, which I don't think anyone in the neighborhood is excited about. The plan does call for commercial uses, so that, that's why we're inconsistent, is it could actually support maybe even more intensive uses, but this is a residential proposal that, as John mentioned, would have a commitment to have some ground floor active retail uses that would be neighborhood-serving. So, we're happy to have staff support. We think it serves as a, as a good transition from the Lockwood neighborhood. As y'all know, this is an area in transition, so certainly, we've got the single-family character of Lockwood, very intensive intermodal facility, and we think adding a residential project versus a commercial project is a good transition. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Driggs.
I'm just curious about the arithmetic here. You've got two acres, and you have an option for up to 85 single-family attached townhomes?
We are removing the option for the townhomes, so it'll be just a multifamily.
So, you would put 275 multifamily units on two acres?
That's correct.
How tall is that building?
We've got a height limit in our plan. Actually, if I have my slides.
It's 85 feet. It's the maximum.
Eighty-five?
And then it steps down as you move to the neighborhood. Staff's got a, had a good slide on the height transition, and then the corner, we've got basically the whole block except for the corner closest to the neighborhood is a previously approved multifamily plan, which steps down, I think, to two stories, so it would stair-step as you move to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Colin, do you have access to, back to your slides, that photo right there? So, it's a combination. Thank you for pulling that up. For staff, I'm trying to understand, we're having a lot of conversations regarding truck parking. We just approved last year a project that's going to build access for truck parking, because we're having a lot of challenges along the highways and in some communities with truck parking. So, we're looking at where currently there is space, that is, commercial space, that we're potentially having a conversation of rezoning for residential when most of what around that is commercial. Help me understand how it's only inconsistent a little bit versus what's around there, and knowing what the needs are in the community for industrial, for commercial, mainly for truckers to be able to safely park somewhere, whether it's this facility or the other facility that we approved last year. Help me understand how 200-plus unit multifamily ties in on this corner versus sticking with the commercial use that has been identified.
So, I was, I was trying to go back, because I think we did approve another petition earlier this evening that was also geared for truck parking, so we are seeing some additional petitions come in that are trying to help alleviate some of that problem. This, from what I understand, is just the natural transition of this use, wanting to move to another location that's more conducive to the operations and provide that redevelopment opportunity. I think our, our goal with some of these that are looking at that residential mix that's in that commercial place type is to try and get some commercial uses out of this. Commits to a minimum, I think, of 3,000 square feet, so a lot of them just say up to, and they don't have any minimum. They may never build up to that. They may build one square foot of it out of the 5,000, 6,000 they're proposing. This one commits to a minimum of 3,000, I think, up to five, is that five or eight?
Up to eight.
So, up to eight. So, we know we're, we will get 3,000 square feet of commercial uses that will be neighborhood serving for this, along with the residential. The truck parking is going away. This is an area of North Tryon that's transitioning fairly quickly, so it's, it's not surprising to see some of these uses that are manufacturing, industrial in nature start to transition, but I do see that we are picking some of those up in other locations that are consistent with the, the land use plan and consistent with manufacturing logistics for uses like this, so it's a little bit of a loss to this particular area in one sense, but we picked it up in some other places in the city.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, Colin, I see that we had four people attend the meeting, the neighborhood meeting. Have you been in contact with the Lockwood Neighborhood Association?
I think they had a representative at the meeting, so we had a couple adjacent property owners that were business owners, and then some folks from the community that were involved in the community meeting. I think they have some concerns about the current condition of the property and what it's being used for, and I, I feel like the neighborhood would like to see this transition in this direction, but I won't speak for them.
Right. I agree that this is an area that's in transition, and we have other projects going on along this corridor that helps to transition the area. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that the neighborhood residents had an opportunity to weigh in, because with the number of units going in, it increases the trips in this, in this area by a little bit over 1,800 trips a day, and so I just want to make sure that they have the opportunity to weigh in. I do think that the current use of this space versus what, what's being proposed will upgrade and enhance the neighborhood, and I think Lockwood is in alignment with that. I just would like for them to have that opportunity to speak to it. I'm also happy to see that we have bike lanes and bike lane buffers in the proposal that will work very well on those, on that corner for Dalton and, and Tryon Street. So, I'll, I'll follow up with Lockwood to make sure they...
I'll share with you the list of attendees, too.
Excellent, okay. Thank you. No other, further questions. Motion to close.
Second. Motion made, improperly second to close the public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? None, all in favor? Raise your hands. Any opposed, raise your hands. Seeing none, a vote is unanimous. We'll move on to the final rezoning petition of the night, agenda item number 58, rezoning petition 2022-193 by Brown Group Incorporated, located on approximately 19.79 acres on the east side of La Granger Road and the west side of Interstate 85, south of West Mallard Creek Road, Mallard Creek Church Road, Council District 4, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is RE Research and R4 Single Family Residential, and the proposed zoning is RE3 CD Research Conditional. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation. There are no speakers against, so after staff's presentation, the petitioner will have three minutes.
Bridget, I don't know how you keep drawing the short...
It's done in numerical order, but I don't believe them.
All right, this is approximately 19.79 acres on the east side of La Granger Road and the west side of Interstate 85, south of West Mallard Creek Church Road. It is currently zoned RE1 Research and RE4 Single Family, or sorry, R4 Single Family Residential, and the proposed zoning is RE3 Research. The 2040 policy map calls for Neighborhood 1 and Neighborhood 2. The proposal would allow up to 184 residential dwelling units, dedicates 28 feet of right-of-way from, provides an eight-foot planting strip and six-foot sidewalk along the site frontage, and petition proposes a 37-and-a-half-foot Class C buffer along the northern side of the property, and a 50-foot Class C buffer along the I-85 property edge. Commits to internal sidewalk and crosswalk network that connects residences to the buildings on the site and sidewalks along the budding streets, provides open spaces throughout the site with amenity areas that include landscaping, seating areas, hardscape elements, parks, pools, shade structures, et cetera, and provides architectural details which include building materials. That recommends approval of the petition upon the resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation. The petition is consistent with the 2040 policy map recommendation for the Neighborhood 2 place type for the majority of the site, but inconsistent with the recommendation for the Neighborhood 1 place type for that portion of the site that's right along the frontage of La Granger. The petition proposes to add a variety of housing uses to the area. Future residents of the proposed site will be well-served by the activity center and commercial uses in the area. The petition plans to provide two access points on La Granger Road and proposes a 37-and-a-half-foot Class C buffer on the northern side of the property and 50-foot Class C buffer along I-85. It provides sidewalk and pedestrian amenities along La Granger and includes internal sidewalk and crosswalk network connectivity throughout the site. It provides open space areas as well for the community. It would revise the recommended place type as specified in the 2040 policy map from Neighborhood 1 to Neighborhood 2 for that one portion of the site, and I'll take any questions after Bridget's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, members of the zoning committee. Bridget Grant, Land Use Consultant, here on behalf of the petitioner, the Brown Group, with John Holcomb, with Kimberly Horn, one of the last remaining participants, and y'all don't mind when I go last, because I like to say staff did a phenomenal job. We've been here for a long night. We're consistent, largely consistent with the adopted land use policy, have staff support, had no speakers in opposition at our community meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Move to close.
Second. Mr. Driggs.
So, Ms. Grant, after what you've been through tonight, I think the least we could do is just go ahead and approve this?
My client would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Motion to close. Any further questions?
The petition. You mean?
Do you want to be recognized?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
For this, um, no, we'll talk offline. Yeah, I'm fine. Motion to close.
There's been motions made, second to close the public hearing. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, closing the public hearing? Raise your hand.
Move to adjourn.
Any opposed? That motion is passed. Recognize Ms. Anderson before we have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just would like to announce that I will have a town hall on June 10th, Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Cotabro Brewing in District 1, and as we've heard tonight, we'll be focusing on how residents can navigate the UDO, as the UDO is scheduled to come online on June 1st. So, we'll have some representation from the zoning committee, we'll have some representation from the housing, the housing team, as well as a variety of others. So, it'll be a really good time, and it's going to be very informative, so I invite all District 1 residents to come out to Cotabro Brewery on June 10th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. City manager Liz, I would like to add on the business agenda that we have staff, our planning director, come back and give us some more insight on infield development as relates to triplexes and duplexes, part of our UDO implementation at our next business Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Does that require a vote?
No, unless there's an objection, that doesn't require a vote.
Well, so is he, he's attempting to put something on the agenda, right? So, we, in the future, so we would need either six votes from us, or the mayor, or the manager to do it.
He asked for information at the next business meeting.
He asked the manager to do it. The manager can do it, so that's a request, right?
Right.
As long as it's going to happen, I mean, so I'm making sure.
That's why he gave a timeline at the next business meeting.
Okay.
And the next business meeting is next week?
Yes.
You want to clarify your request?
Uh, make sure David and Allison, uh, infield redevelopment as a part of the UDO as it relates to triplexes and duplexes, so we don't have any unattended consequences as we saw here this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Let's do it. Let's just adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I want to close. I want to.
Unattended consequences as we saw here this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I want to close.
I want to close.